Good evening, I'd like to call to order this study session of Urbana School District 116. Roll call please.
Member Stanton. Uh, member Jones.
Here.
Member Hassanaka. Member Baxley.
Here.
Member Langendorf here. Vice President Exum.
Here.
President Palowski.
Here. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda?
No, there is another middle school little update that goes with 10.2.
Okay, so 10.2 will be extended to include another presentation. Okay. Up next are citizen statements. If you'd like to make a citizen statement before the board, please fill out one of these Goldenrod forms in the back of the room and hand it to our recording secretary Lori Johnson. First up is C. Higgins-Whelis.
Okay. Thank you for what you do. If you don't know me-
I'm sorry Tina, could you bring it really close because we've had reports from people at home saying they can't hear.
How's this?
That's better, thank you.
Now I want my seconds back. Alright. Thank you for what you do. If you don't know me, I served on this board for 12 years and was board president for 10 of those years. While I was board president, we contracted for the first equity audit and started systemic steps to address the achievement gap. I led the effort that resulted in passage of a $23 million referendum with 83% of the vote in favor that started the renovation cycle for our schools that Wiley will complete. Since then, I have volunteered in the schools and mentored. I've raised money and donated money through the United Urban Alumni Association and CU Foundation. I am here because my board service taught me that if you ask the wrong questions, you're likely to get the wrong answer. You're asking, "What should we do with the Wiley building since we have $20 million to renovate it?" If that's all you focus along, I along with many others fear you will get the wrong answers and constrain your own options for many years to come. Here are the questions we hope you will use to center your board deliberations. How do we improve student achievement? Why is public trust in the district and school board so low and how can we improve that? How can we get valid modeling of options if we move to K6 schools, K8 schools, have only four elementary schools, etc.? If we have too many students at the Urbana Middle School, what options exist? What does each cost and how does each approve the student experience and achievement? What do we need to do to follow the recommendations in both the dual-language and equity audit reports that we must focus on curriculum and instruction? What did Champagne do to get more valid community input when the public objected to the first three revised schools of choice plans? And should we consider such an approach? As a board, you are holding two important reports, the DL evaluation and the equity audit. Both emphasize the need for a central and concerted focus on improving curriculum and instruction. None of the things that your board time is spent on seem to consider those. Our group has been asking consistently for you to center student achievement in all your decisions. Yet you closed the only elementary school in our district that was improving student achievement. In the process, you disenfranchised a vibrant school community and we've seen the resultant disengagement of parents who had previously been deeply involved. Dr. Ivory Tatum took time at the last meeting to state emphatically that she had no outcome in mind before the process began. I take her at her word. Perhaps it would be useful to review though the statements and slides that have seeded that idea in the community. The slides in a February meeting, one listed the 6th grade center as a possibility for Wiley. And then in an early facilities committee meeting, Dr. Ivory Tatum shared her dream for a 6th grade center. The speed of this process, the fact that the furniture and library were dispersed throughout the district, that no attempt was made to keep the Wiley community intact, as has been the case for every other elementary school that's been renovated, these elements add up. And then the flaws with the facilities committee recommendation furthered mistrust. The fact that district employees vastly outnumbered community members and parents on the committee. Excuse me. Excuse me. That two unanimous blocks of district employees were the overwhelming majority of the 24 votes in favor of the 6th grade center option. All 12 district administrators and all six Urbana Middle School teachers made up 18 of the 24 votes out of the total of 33. That engaged parents, community members, and non-middle school teachers on the committee did not want a 6th grade center. The K5 subcommittee, for example, voted against it. Overall, parents on the committee didn't want a 6th grade center by a significant margin. I'd like to point out that more district parents and community members have taken the time to appear in person and speak to the board about the closing of Wiley Elementary than participated in the final vote of the committee. While we're focused on spending $20 million to renovate a school that was closed without any definite plan for what to do with it, student achievement is still not being addressed. And the board may be doing de facto redistricting without a plan or guiding principles by making choices now. The current trajectory is a fast decision that is not evidence-based, has not included parent voices, and may constrain district options for years to come. Champagne proposed a widely unpopular approach for its schools of choice and then used a community-based process using an external company that took up public reaction into account and came up with a fourth plan that met many student community concerns. Surely, we can do as well in Urbana. Please vote no or delay this vote about Wiley and the middle school 6th center until there's a better due diligence in asking the right questions, using available research to answer those questions, and then base the decisions on what will improve academic achievement the most for district students. I have left with Lori written copies of this comment and comments that I made in December talking about the trust thermocline and how public organizations gain and lose trust. And I ask that you heed those. There's a copy for each of you. And I thank you for your service and I thank you for listening.
Next up is Lindsay Amarabu. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
It's okay, it's Amarabu.
Amarabu, thank you.
Good evening to everyone. So I was on the district facilities committee over the summer. I am a parent and I am a community member of Urbana students. I have a UMS student already and I have an elementary child. I'm coming from this with a Sped aspect because one of my children are autistic. And I feel like through his development and growth, we are teaching our children of this community social-emotional learning. And when we're doing that and putting them with bigger peers, 7th and 8th graders, it is harder for the kids of that community because we teach him that if you take out a pencil and you look around and you see others taking out pencils, you mirror that image. If they're taking out books, you mirror that image. If they're getting in line for recess, you mirror that image. It's part of social-emotional learning. If we put our children who are young and Sped into a group of children of 8th graders, they're going to start mirroring the images, whether they are good or bad, and they may end up in consequences that they do not understand at this time. I don't think that's fair. Yesterday was Family Day at Urbana School Districts and I ended up taking my son with me to the middle school to see his brother and go through classes. We only made it through one period. He was terrified because of the things that were going on in the hallway, the pushing, the shoving, the bigger kids, all the traffic. Like, it was very overwhelming, super stimulating. And that's something I think that we should consider as well. Sorry, I'm not used to talking to people. But as a parent, I believe in the 6th grade center. I think it's beneficial for not only Sped children but for children that are at that age level. They still have a lot of social-emotional learning that they need to go through during those times. And I think it's important that we concentrate on that as well. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you very much. Next up is Yuli Borishnikov.
Okay. Can you hear me? I'll talk about budget. Budget is important, it's key to many processes. And I know today the Wiley will be the center and focus, and the budget is the key to this as well. Remember, the whole process started at, let's be open, with a lie. We were told that, you know, we absolutely need to rush the asbestos abatement because the price is going up. And today we will be voting, by the way, on this asbestos abatement. So, $300,000, this is the price of just ending the school with hundreds of students, families, rooting them. Wow. So... We're working the budget, you know. You're telling the teachers that they're leaving the, not just the district, they're leaving profession. We all know why. They're not paid enough. If the teacher will pay it well, then you wouldn't tolerate these examples in the middle school when the teacher would go out on the floor and shout at the students, "You apes, you monkeys, you will never achieve anything in life." You'd fire her. You don't, because you cannot replace anybody. Because you're not paying money. Did you lift a finger over the past, whatever, I don't know how many years, to shift the budget so you pay the teachers more? So... And how, you know, you were voting last meeting, like 10 days ago, two weeks ago, on the budget. You were given, then my understanding, you were given this hundred pages to digest, like four days before you voted on it, as a PDF. Were you given Excel? Were you given spreadsheets? Anybody? I mean, you're allowed, you know, you don't have to answer me, but you're allowed to. So, don't be shy, you know, answer. So you're, you know, if you're not given the spreadsheets, you cannot, you know, filter, you cannot analyze it at all. We're giving the keys to the codes, you know, these little codes along each line which tells you what it is, where the money will be spent? No? Where are they? You had the codes? Okay. So what are you doing about it? All this, you know, why the cleaning costs are exploding suddenly? Do you know about it? Did you discuss it? What is $600,000 for private tuition and board to somebody? I don't know. Did you discuss that as well? So all this money, they're going somewhere. And, you know, the loan, which you, the budget assumes and you will be voting on soon and, you know, until rushing to, like, satisfaction of, does people represent you? Okay, so, very, very eager to get it fast, right? Because, you know, right now rates are high, means their commissions will be higher. So why are you rushing it? Because the district needs it or somebody else? I don't know. Did you have the time to discuss it at all? It's not about, you know, I know, like, I look miserly. It's not about the money we pay, it's the waste. The district spends $30,000 per student, which is 50% above the national or Illinois average. And what we get in return? The middle school, which, Dr. William, ran into, like, 5% of the board school in Illinois? That's the result? Wow. And now he's promoted to, like, second head of multi-linguistic division, which is unable still, it seems, to provide syllabi for the teachers. Should be like their task. Anyway. Anyway, so go back to it. Like, you spend about 60 hours a year in this, on those meetings. Do you know how much time you spent on discussing, discussing this budget last week, last month? 28 minutes total, including the presentation, including the questions from new members who didn't have any idea what's going on. 28 minutes. Again, this is $120 million budget. It exceeds vastly the budget for the rest of the city of Urbana with police, fire department, and whatnot. The superintendent, Dr. Ivory Tatum, is the most powerful, you know, public official in town in terms of the budget and workforce. And what control are you exercising over them? You know, look at, you know, DC. It's like, oh, this circus and Congress. I thought, okay, I'm coming to this small town that people will be, you know, different. No, I don't see any difference.
Thank you, Mr. Borishnikov. Jennifer Hickson, followed by Rusty Clevenger.
And now for something completely different. I wanted to bring to everybody's attention something I saw in the paper on Saturday. I don't know that any of you will remember her, but Rita Gentry, who had been a teacher at King School for almost 30 years, died. And she was one of the kindest people I ever knew. She was a great teacher. Kids loved her. Parents loved her. Colleagues loved her. And I thought it was so fitting. It was so Rita. The end of the obituary in the News Gazette on Saturday said, "Instead of a memorial, Rita has requested that her friends and neighbors and family and colleagues do a good deed in her name." And so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and to the community's attention. And I hope that we will all follow through with that. And I just want to say I will miss her.
Thank you so very much. Really touching. Rusty Clevenger, followed by Cindy Adamick.
Hello, can you all hear me? Alright. I, my name is Rusty Clevenger. I am currently in my 15th year of teaching visual art for Urbana School District. I currently teach 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students at Urbana Middle School. Prior to that, I taught in elementary level, either at Dr. Williams or and/or Wiley School, because we traveled, for 12 years, so from 2009 to 2021. Many shifts and changes have happened in Urbana School District during my 15 years. However, one of the reasons why I choose to stay in Urbana School District is there seems to be a natural drive to change and evolve with the community over time in order to provide what is best for students during their long educational journey with the district. So, for example, 30 years ago, Urbana School District was one of the first, still is one of the only, in the state and in the United States, so one of the limited few, who offer elementary fine arts and dance, drama, music, and art. So with that, I was lucky enough to be a new teacher that was in Urbana School District for over 12 years in this program. So I think what would happen if 30 years ago Urbana didn't offer that opportunity. So what I have seen in my years in elementary is fine art-specific spaces for elementary fine arts, innovative arts infusion curriculum, and adapting the common core curriculum to fine arts over multiple years. I have been able to be went and set. 11 years ago, I was teaching at Dr. Williams Elementary School and Wiley Elementary School when the Urbana Dual Language Program began at Dr. Williams Elementary School. That was a big change for the building, the community, the staff, families, and students. However, I was lucky enough to experience what the long haul of that actual change looked like for students, families, and the community. So, I would say the Dual Language Program at Dr. Williams School has not only met the goals of the program, but has exceeded them and specifically altered and changed the community for better. So when I was signed up to be on the district facility committee, not quite knowing what it was or what it all entailed, I had a lot of emotions. I'm very empathetic for the elementary school that I used to teach at and the staff and really the heroes that walked that hall, those hallways during my time in the building and I'm sure after. However, I can't overlook that through the research, conversations, and discussions, that a 6th grade center definitely seems appeasing and, I think, will provide opportunities to Urbana's School District students for the long journey that they are here. So one thing in example is I do believe a 6th grade center would increase academic achievement and specifically new learning. So as a fine arts teacher, I feel like including physical space, so the actual rooms, schedule space, so having two middle school buildings where the schedule can actually expand, will provide the opportunity for the fine arts program to be scaffolded from kindergarten through high school. One leading example is that currently we offer dance and drama for K through 5th, not at all at the middle school, and then drama and occasionally dance at the high school. So with that, if you are a music student, you can continue your program from kindergarten through 12th grade and have it scaffolded with curriculum and supports. If you are in art, you can have it scaffolded with curriculum from K through 12, and occasionally that is tricky with schedules. However, for those students who express themselves in dance and drama, they have drop-off points where they're expected to stay after school or sign up for community programs which cost additional money in order to participate in those programs. As a person who had parents who had to decide on their budget whether they were going to pay for art programs outside of the school or try to figure out where I could get lessons other places, this is a determining factor for scaffolding students' ability to express themselves in the fine arts. Thank you.
Cindy Adamick, and followed by Julie DeVal. If anybody else wishes to make a statement before the board, there are Goldenrod sheets in the back of the room.
Do I have to wait for the timer? Hi, my name is Cindy Adamick. I teach 6th grade social studies at the middle school. I am also the avid psych coordinator and the chair of the social studies department. I want to start out by saying thank you to Ms. Langendorf because you did last week what we've been asking people to do. You came to the middle school and you talked to us and you listened to what we have to say. And I'm just going to basically echo what I said in the meeting with us. This is, I love my job. I love working for Urbana School Districts. It is amazing. We have an amazing group of teachers. I love our students. I love the diversity. There's, you can't get me to say much about my bad about coming to work every day. I love going to work. Having said that, I think we can do better by our middle school students. Our school is incredibly crowded. There are too many people in the hall. Ms. Langendorf, you seemed shocked when we met with the 6th grade teachers last week when someone said, "Well, teachers get pushed and hurt in the hall." And, like, you looked kind of taken aback and shocked by that. And I kind of sat back and thought, "How can you not know that?" That happens often in our hallways. Not because we have horrible, awful students, not, it's because it's too crowded. There are too many people in a small space. I think we have a great opportunity to try something new, to try something different, to try something that will serve all of our students, serve our elementary kids coming into the middle school setting, and help our 6th graders going into 7th and 8th grade by increasing opportunities for SEL, by increasing opportunities for programming, as my colleague Mr. Clevenger mentioned, by increasing safety. The thought of being able to have two lunch periods for 6th grade instead of all 300 of our students in one spot at one time is amazing. Just, I mean, it's not relaxing going in the lunchroom. You, I don't know about you, but when I go to eat lunch, I just kind of want to sit back and breathe for a minute. It, the opportunity to have that is new, it's exciting. Is there a lot of decisions that have to be made to get from here to there? Absolutely. But I think we need to do better by our students. And by making a step to do better by our 6th graders, it's going to have a cascade effect on everybody else. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie DeVal.
My name is Julie DeVal. I am a parent of multiple students at high school, middle school, and elementary school in Urbana. I'm going to give my thoughts on my, as a Sped lens, and then I also have a personal lens. As far as the Sped lens, 6th grade is a new world. Going from a structured school environment to an environment where they navigate freely without personal assistance for four minutes is a huge, between classes, is a huge change for all and daunting for those with special needs. These are, these transitions need to be nurtured and controlled. The safety for 6th graders being exposed to 6th and 7th or 8th graders, their physical sizes are smaller, and I have great concern about my children and grandchildren going to the bathroom, just simply going to the bathroom and being confronted by a 7th and 8th grader. We talked about more transition if we have a 6th grade center compared to another elementary. While I agree transitions can be, are frustrating for some, some transition is, more transition is better for some Sped students. Learning to be a 6th grader in an isolated, protected environment that is just strategically supported, playing, putting transition is more productive and beneficial in the overall process than transitioning too many changes at once that is less successful. That was my Sped lens. As a parent, I don't really have something to say speech-wise. I just have some points I would like to bring out to the board. There were a lot of studies that were brought out during this facilities meeting. None of those studies are comparable to the uniqueness of Urbana with the university, with the amount of students, with the diversity of just so many different things. Not one, there were so many different researchers, but none of them captured all of who Urbana is. I, part of this is dispelling some of the information that was also out there. I was on the K through 5 committee and all K through 5 building admins that were present did share info about the needs and safety of the students. Regardless of class size, if we don't have SEL services in the classroom, it's not going to work. I have been into schools this year and SEL services are needed regardless of what you decide tonight. And they are imperative for us to get through the rest of this school year. Teachers need support. Students are not learning because they're watching other students being disciplined and SEL services are just absolutely a must. I agree, I was in the lunchroom at the middle school. There were over 300 students. It is very loud. I, it is very difficult to supervise. I watched some kids doing some things and I, it was so crowded, I knew the direction they were. I couldn't tell you who the child or the student was because it was just too congested. Again, I think that the class size is important, but SEL is, and teacher support is important. We, I do agree, class sizes are big right now and they are due to teacher shortages. However, I, and I do agree recruiting teachers is a problem. But I want the board to remember that this is a nationwide problem. This is not an Urbana problem. This is a nationwide problem. It is not that just that Urbana is bad and nobody can get teachers here. San Francisco, California is having the same problems that we are. Dr. Ivory Tatum did, it was mentioned in one of the reports, that Dr. Ivory Tatum did give her best professional opinion at the first facilities meeting. That is true. However, it did not set the tone of the meetings. Each committee member had the freedom to express and present their opinions. Views and research were discussed at each meeting. In the Sped department, when writing an IEP, we write goals based on the current level of the student. We don't project, we don't predict where a student might be in the future. Currently, as of today, if the board voted against a 6th grade center, USD does not have enough staff to, or enough faculty to staff an elementary building. They can take the 6th grade and transfer over to this building. They do not have the staff to separate into an elementary building. It has been continued to be brought up that Dr. Ivory Tatum, I almost said, on the board was not being transparent. I question if the transparency of those who are against the 6th grade center. Please keep in mind that someone leaked the non-school district committee members' email addresses that we, and we received multiple unsolicited, unsolicited and unofficial emails regarding issues surrounding Wiley Elementary. Two co-chairs voted against 6th grade center. That's true. However, they were two members of the committee. Their vote does not speak louder than any other vote on the committee. Their vote does not speak louder than any other vote on the committee. Finally, there were 24 votes for the sixth grade center and seven for the elementary. Paul, you asked to have a committee. We, the board voted to have a committee. We were invested in our students and our committee, community. We gave up many nights of our summer, more than we originally signed up for, to meet and discuss issues that you charged to us. We talked, we researched, we voted. We made a recommendation to the board. It would be a huge slap of disrespect to each one of us that was on that committee for the board to vote against our time-consuming recommendations. What we have now is barely working. We have to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Natalia Stampley. Natasha, I'm very sorry, Ms., again, if somebody would like to, if anybody else would like to participate in the public comment section, there are golden brown sheets in the back of the room. We will have an additional public forum here whose subject will be the Wiley Building.
Did I do it right? This is fancy. Hi, my name is Natasha Stampley. I am in my third year as a sixth grade social studies teacher at Urbana Middle School, and this summer I also worked on a district facilities committee. I originally did not plan on speaking tonight because I sent a very lengthy email a few days ago, but when I was sitting and listening and talking to colleagues today, I just had more thoughts. And I feel like the perspective or the mindset is that there's an issue. I am hearing, oh, the facilities was mostly staff. What I heard is staff members are coming and spending more time to voice that there is a problem at the school that we feel we need help and we feel we need support with. And at this point, if you say yes to a sixth grade center, that's still two issues, and we have those problems. If you vote no, those issues and those problems are still going to be there. We are hearing about staff members who do not feel safe. We are hearing students do not feel safe. We're hearing families do not feel safe. It is very easy to pick out the problems. It's way harder to find solutions. And that's what I'm interested in. If you think this is not the solution, that's your right. But what is your solution? What are we then going to do as a community, as a board, as staff? Because the staff are showing up every single day in that building. We don't get to only come when there's a charge. We don't get to only show up once every three months or when we're called. We are there every day in these conditions. And unless you are there with us every day, you don't get as much of a right to say whether these conditions are big or not. Because when we were charged to vote on them, the staff voted that these are big issues. We can see it in the shortages. We can see it in the new teachers quitting, hiring teachers in August, and they're quitting by September. When I joined this committee over the summer, it was wanting to make the best decision for the district. Because I understand elementary school problems and closing schools. I grew up in Chicago. There were a lot of schools closed all the time. But those elementary school students are going to be middle school students. And really asks, how the middle school is now, do you want to put more students there with no changes, with no solutions? So that is my question. If you are saying no to this, great. But then what are we going to do? What supports are going to be given? What's going to put in place? What's the new plan? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very, very much. Does anybody else like to participate in the public comment right now? We will have a, sorry, I know, this is the citizen statement, sorry. Public forum is coming up next. Is anybody else, okay. Moving on. There is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Sound moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now it is time for our public hearing. So I'll open the floor. If anybody wishes to make a statement at our public hearing with regards to Wiley School, the floor is yours. Go ahead, please, Ms. Hickson. Oh, I'm sorry. We can call you in turn. Go ahead, Ms. Hickson first, and I, sorry, I wasn't sure. I'll make sure you both have your opportunity to speak.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Hickson. I'm a former employee of the district, a resident of Urbana, and a firm believer in the necessity of good public schools. I'm very worried about the Urbana School District and the families and the children it serves. I'm the one that's been sending you the research, and I've been reading the research that I've been sending you. And actually, reading that research has changed my mind about what I think might be the best solution for some of the problems we are facing. And I am asking you to not make a decision tonight that will limit our options in addressing these very serious issues. These are givens as I see them. We have, lower academic achievement correlates positively with increased bad behavior. Smaller class size increases academic achievement, okay, smaller class size increases academic achievement levels and helps with behavior issues. Research supports keeping sixth graders in the elementary schools. Research is mixed about the efficacy of keeping seventh and eighth graders in a K-8 building or a middle school and its effect on academic achievement. But research does support that the K-8 buildings are positively correlated for students feeling safer than in a middle school. Urbana's achievement score, test scores are incredibly low, below the state average. The slide in achievement started long before COVID. Our community and our schools are increasingly violent. Champaign is talking about installing metal detectors in its middle schools. The administration believes that the dual-language program will be more successful in a single building, and there have been no real obvious changes made or work done to try to improve the learning that goes on in the two buildings the DL program is in now. Redistricting and keeping class size low will be lots more difficult with only five, much less four, regular neighborhood schools. The superintendent said the following. I know there's no research, but in Urbana, we don't always have to rely on research because we have always been trendsetters, and we feel we are setting a trend in that if we change the narrative at UMS, we will have people wanting to teach there and wanting to be part of something that is different and unique. Well, at one time, Urbana was a trendsetter. Our test scores were consistently above the state average. When I was multicultural program director, we did try things even when there was no direct research supporting that action. But we vetted that action based on supporting research in the general field. So, in this case, we would look at the research about sixth graders and work to design a program to make sure that we were thinking about all the pros and cons for the sixth graders and for the district. Then we kept track of the data to see if what we did was good. Unfortunately, I have the feeling that the administration is actively turning away from research because they want to make these building changes. And the superintendent's statement belies a primary interest in staffing issues, not academic achievement. It seems to me that there has been no due diligence done in research and planning phases of this move as it affects academic achievement. We must remember that the schools are a system. A decision this large affects everyone. At the last board meeting, the superintendent said that she had no outcome in mind when we began this process. It was implied that this bubbled up during the committee discussions. I contend, then, that there has not been enough time for the district to thoroughly vet this idea and other competing ideas, trying to make the absolute best decision to increase student achievement for everyone in the Urbana schools. Please do not vote yes tonight. Urge the district to consider this option and competing options in light of the needs that Urbana families and students are facing today. And I really agree with the last person.
Thank you. Please come on.
I will be speaking in Spanish and in English tonight, so I would ask for the additional five minutes for translation. And I will be speaking intentionally in Spanish first because although many of our Spanish speakers may not be related to the Wiley situation, it is an underserved language, and as a multilingual teacher, I value and want to promote the value in our Spanish language. Hola, me llamo Rebecca Hoffman. Yo enseño inglés de segundo idioma y también apoyo de lenguaje igual de recién llegados en LEEL y DPW. Este es mi octavo año de ser una empleada en nuestro distrito, y por algunos de esos años yo enseñé en Wiley School. Al decirlo simplemente, estoy decepcionada. La comunidad de Wiley, la administración, empleadas, estudiantes y familias estaban separados fuertemente, dividido por un cayer el cielo, emergencia de amiento. Ustedes han escuchado sus llantos, sus quejas y su confusión, pero decidieron escuchar otras voces, las voces enfatizando números y solo algunas perspectivas. La recomendación de cambiar Wiley a un centro de sexto grado permite la superpoblación del middle school aplastar a una escuela primaria increíble que hace crecimiento grandísimo. Vamos a hablar un momento del tamaño de clases. Se dice que casi todas nuestras clases primarias son debajo los límites contractuales. Eso no es un logro, eso debe ser una expectativa. Los límites contractuales son exactamente estos, límites máximos. No son recomendaciones ni ideales. El límite contractual para cuarto y quinto grado es 31. Tener una clase de 29 o 30 estudiantes es una razón para celebración de éxito de un tamaño de clase apropiado, aunque se pueda hacerlo. Eso no quiere decir que se debe hacerlo. Tener un centro de sexto grado fuera del campus de UMS va a crear más problemas en las áreas de servicios especializados como servicios multilingües, servicios de educación especial, servicios de aceleración y más. Ese no simplemente hace complicaciones y estrés en estudiantes, hace problemas para los empleados también. Maestros y otros empleados en esos programas y probablemente otros programas probablemente tienen que viajar. Yo soy una maestra que viaje durante siete años. La parte difícil es más que los pocos minutos de conducir. Tiene que empacar sus materiales cada día, o tal vez más que una vez en el día. Para verificar que tienes todo lo que necesitas. Extraer todo en su carro es un sentimiento de no tener una casa. Es difícil manejar culturas diferentes en los edificios. Siempre se falta algo. Viajar es posible pero no ideal. Aunque se pueda hacerlo, eso no quiere decir que se debe hacerlo. Yo tengo pensamientos fuertes que para cambiar a Wiley a un centro de sexto grado no es justo y va a causar problemas para maestros y estudiantes primarias, y también va a causar problemas adicionales para maestros y estudiantes de UMS. Por favor vota no hoy. Hi, my name is Rebecca Hoffman. I teach English as a second language as well as dual-language newcomer support at LEEL and Dr. Williams. This is my eighth year as an educator in Urbana School District 116, and for several of those years I taught at Wiley. To put it plainly, I am crushed. The community of Wiley admin, teachers, staff, students, and families were abruptly broken apart last school year, split by a "sky is falling asbestos emergency." You heard their cries, complaints, and confusion, but chose to prioritize other voices, voices emphasizing numbers and promoting only certain perspectives. The recommendation for moving forward with Wiley School as a sixth grade center allows middle school overcrowding needs to trample over an incredible elementary school making huge growth. Let's talk for a moment about class size. It's been mentioned that nearly all our elementary classrooms are under the contractual limits. That shouldn't be touted as an accomplishment. That should be an expectation. The contractual limits are just that, limits, maxims. Not a recommendation nor an ideal. The contractual limit for fourth and fifth grade is 31. Is having a fourth or fifth grade class at 29 or 30 students a reason for celebration of success of an appropriate class size? Just because it can be done doesn't mean it should be done. Having a sixth grade center off-campus from the middle school will create additional challenges in the area of specialized services, whether that be multilingual services, special education services, acceleration services, et cetera. Not only does this create additional complications and stress on students, it creates problems for staff as well. Teachers and staff for these programs, as well as likely others, will likely need to travel. I've been a traveling teacher for the last seven years. The challenge is more than just the few-minute drive time. It's packing up everything every day or multiple times a day to make sure you have everything you need. It's lugging everything around in your vehicle. It's a feeling of not having a home. It's hard to juggle the different climates and cultures of the buildings. You're always missing something. Traveling is possible, but it's not ideal. Just because it can be done doesn't mean it should be done. I feel strongly that changing Wiley to a sixth grade center is unfair and problematic to elementary teachers and students. Plus, I feel it will cause countless additional issues for middle school students and teachers. Please vote no tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to participate in tonight's open forum? Please, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Julia Hockenmeyer. I've written to you before, I've been before the board several times since the LEEL dual language issue last year. I'm a LEEL parent, a community member, and I guess, first I wanted to tell you thank you for having all of these discussions. I really feel like the last couple of weeks have been really good. This has been really good today. I'm really learning so much. I really feel like we're starting to come a bit out of our bubbles, which is great. We really need that. Perhaps the board should, should consider collecting the kind of feedback you're getting from the community and actually sharing that with the rest of the, of the town, because I don't think we are aware of these things, right? When I was at LEEL, I, I was just there for a few months because my daughter was just in kindergarten that year. I had no idea what was going on with the dual-language parent. Even though my pa, my, my daughter was in the dual-language program at the time, right? I think there's just a lot of ignorance here, right? You know, so, so please talk more. This is great. I wondered to, no, I'm just wondering why we need to rush the Wiley decision tonight? So, asbestos approval is just being approved today, right? Five or six months after you had decided to do this. And it sounds like Wiley will only be reopened, basically, a year and a half from now, 25, 26, right? If I understood the agenda correctly. So, and, and two weeks ago, right, Dr. Ivory Tatum said that there wouldn't be much of a difference, right, between, between what needs to be done for the Wiley building as an elementary school versus a sixth grade center, right? It's actually still not entirely clear to me what would change, right, in the remodeling process, right? What exactly are the specifications for a sixth grade center versus an elementary school, right? How much money needs to be spent for these options? How do they differ? How does the timeline differ beyond sort of furniture that's going to be ordered at the last minute anyway, right? Perhaps you guys know, I'm not sure the community does, right? I'm also wondering how this decision is going to affect the dual-language options, right? How much money are you going to have left over? Are there other options? For example, we, you know, we've been talking about a, a whole dual-language elementary school, right? What about a whole dual-language K through eight school like in Champaign, right, like the IPA? Would that relieve enough of the stress on UMS, right? Would that be an option? What about Brookings Center? I hear sort of rumors that Brookings is going to become available again, right? I believe that used to be an elementary school, if I heard that correct, you know, that was long before my time. I don't know how much it would cost to sort of, you know, sort of change that back. You know, just basically really make sure you have all of the options on the table before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to make a statement?
I keep hearing all these statements about Wiley. This isn't personal. This isn't, no one is against Wiley students. This is about the district. Like Wiley students are going to go to the middle school, they're going to go to the high school. And honestly, I sit here and wonder, in three years, are we going to be sitting here listening to the complaints of what's going on at the middle school? That, that they're trying to take care of now? We, Dr. J, you were, you have a job. We, we hired you. The board approved for you to be here. This is your wheelhouse. This is what you decided, as a board, decided that, or as a team, that you needed. You know, what's interesting to me is a few weeks ago in the press, the Urbana football team was getting hit by our own people. It was all over Facebook about how, you know, we had no team and we sucked and it was just bad and, and just bad publicity. And I felt bad for these boys. And so I, I, my husband and I wanted to get them dinner before a game. And I went to speak to these kids who have terrible reputations on Facebook, I mean, just through the media. And every single one of them came out to my car to, to get something. Like it showed what kind of people they were. And as I was speaking to them as they were eating, it, one of the things I said to them is they, they show up. For all those other people in school that are making fun of you because you're Urbana football team and you suck and, you know, terrible team, I don't see their selves out on the field. They show up every day. So this nice lady in the grayback there who just sat here and said, "I show up every day." She shows up every day, as well as a lot of them. So I, I think that as, while I feel for Wiley, and I, I'm not arguing that this was, came as a shock and very fast, that is looking at one section of our district and not the district as a whole. I want to remind you that, that behavior is a form of communication, and some of the behaviors in the school from the students are them speaking out the best way that they know how. Not the appropriate way, but the best way they know how. And lastly, I again have been in many schools. I am asking the board, do not postpone this vote this evening. This school, this district is divided. It is divided in the schools between teachers, parents, students, staff. It is being felt by everybody in the community. Nobody doubts that you have a hard decision to make, but make it and let us move forward. We cannot take another week of these meetings going on and on. Our staff, teachers, teachers don't feel like they have a place to go. PTA money is, is, is being held hostage. Like this is ridiculous. This is Urbana, we have a leader, we've chosen her to be our leader. She had a recommendation, and I agree with what you said a couple of weeks ago. You stand up there and fight diversity every single day, regardless of what your opinion is, and you stand behind that. And other people that are here, they need to think about why you're here, not about getting elected the next time or what you said at the last election. It's about what in your heart is being said. You have more teachers that are sitting here begging for their safety. This isn't about money. These people know they're getting, get their butts kicked every single day they walk into that school. They're not asking you for more money. They're asking you for a safe environment. The board should be able to vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Does anybody else wish to make a statement? Please come forward.
It's me again. Okay, so being a parent, I, my kids have done, like went to different schools. They were in the Urbana early childhood, they've been to Yankee Ridge, they've been to Thomas Paine, UMS. And I must say that out of all the schools that they've been to, the one thing is the admins. Everybody has been great. They've always looked out for my children, for what's best for them, for their needs, for everything. I trust Urbana and admins. I believe that they are doing this because it's right. Like these are what are, this is what our children need. It isn't about being diverse and money, it's about the needs of our community. And I think Dr. J is great. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. One more call for public, for public participation in our forum. Going once, going twice. This concludes our public forum. Thank you very much for all of this. Next up is our student ambassador report. Is there a report tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, here it is.
This is the student ambassador report from me and Dominica. This month has been a very important month and week for many students that belong to various underrepresented groups. In this presentation, there will be a lot of instances where we recognize a few of these groups and why they're being recognized recently as the students that belong to these groups, of course, deserve a voice and for their group stories, stories to be heard. These groups are mentioned just every other slide, they're also like the actual report.
All right. Hello. Homecoming week was a very great and eventful week. What do you think, Paulina? What do you, what do you think about homecoming?
Um, I thought it went well. A lot of people were dancing, like a lot of people dancing, and then they loved the food and the drinks and all of that that was served.
Right. The pep rally was really good. I hope you guys see those videos of the, the administrators getting it on, you know? That was very, the students really loved that. So we love when teachers are really active with the students. So thank you to everybody who helps with that.
Happy Latin American Heritage Month. From September fifteenth to October fifteenth, we celebrate Latin American and Hispanic heritage culture and history. There are Matizos, Latinos, Caribbean, African, Pacific Islander, Asian, Middle Eastern, Indigenous, and so much more types of Hispanics. It's essential to support Hispanic and Latin American run clubs, groups and organizations. As we're an underrepresented group and many Hispanics and Latin Americans and BIPOC individuals don't get the same opportunities as others, it's important that we show support to help these individuals. Many Hispanic and Latin American countries gained their independence during this month, such as Guatemala, Mexico, and many more countries in Latin, in Central America specifically. Celebrate diversity. Celebramos juntos y unidos. Vive la cultura, which means long live the culture.
All right. Parent Teacher Conference is coming up soon. We love Parent Teacher Conference, so we love our teachers. Let's donate and give them some food. They work really hard every school year, so they deserve at least some food in their belly. So click the link and donate to our wonderful teachers.
Pride Fest and Awareness. On Saturday, September thirtieth, Champaign-Urbana celebrated the LGBTQ plus community with a parade. Free pride merchandise, so people had like tat, like temporary tattoos and like stickers and like all this cool stuff. And then there is music and food at the festival. And it's crucial that Urbana-Champaign keeps up these festivals to recognize and celebrate LGBTQ plus lives and to grow our community. It's also vital that schools teach acceptance and awareness in schools because I've seen that this can actually make a difference. I had a teacher that taught why we shouldn't use queer slurs, and after that, no one said any queer slurs to other people in class. I'm a queer student who asked other students what they wanted from our school system, and we all agreed that we need more queer representation around schools. My pronouns are she, they, my gender is a female, and my sexuality is pan, omni, demi and bi. What are your peers, what are your students, and what are yours? It's important that we learn about each other.
All right. Tomorrow is International Walk and Roll School Day. I actually really love this day. It's where you walk or bicycle to school, so it can help the environment and boost your health. So everybody get out, walk to school.
September thirtieth was Canada's National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and you're probably, you could be wondering why, like, this is Canada, this is not the US, why does this pertain to us? But it does pertain to us because the United States also had a lot of residential schools, but we don't have a National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and I think that we should, but we don't. So a lot of people still celebrate Canada's National Truth and Reconciliation Day. A lot of Native Americans were, had to undergo emotional, physical and sexual abuse in these schools, and a lot of people died, and they had to change their cultural language names, stuff like that. Many people wear an orange shirt to show their respects on this day. Next year, you should wear an orange shirt to show recognition to this, recognition day. Show respect to all people, but grovel to none. This quote is from an indigenous chief and warrior in Canada, but he was born in the United States and fought against American colonists.
All right. I was speaking to Ms. Kearns, and then she had this idea, which I think that she participated in when she was in high school. It's a program called Orange Crush. And I think due to COVID, a lot of students just stopped participating in a lot of school events. So I noticed that our student section has really been good the last couple of football games. So I think we should start implementing this Orange Crush, is where you wear an orange shirt and it will have like the Orange Crush design for like Urbana and stuff, and students will pay for it, and it will be like the key to get into a football game. For, not for free, you'll pay for the shirt, but you have to meet all the requirements of things. But it will also show school spirit and have like something about Urbana on the back. And I think this will really get students involved in what's going on at school, and PTS Day will really help for that, and we will plan this.
Acknowledging Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is October this month. Breast cancer symptoms are like bumps in armpits or breasts, swollen parts or thick parts in the breast, irritated breast skin or dimpling or redness, flaky skin anywhere in the breast. Breast cancer treatments are chemotherapy, radiation, mammoplasty, and then you can undergo surgeries or take medications. Some good news on breast cancer is most women that get early breast cancer are likely to survive cancer for a very long time. A way to prevent cancer is to have a healthy weight, get exercise and, and take less alcohol.
So the US, the UHS choir is competing in the foreigner competition where they would, they're competing with other schools for five hundred dollars, and they get to perform with them at the State Farm Center. Please support them, and you can text and vote for them, and you can vote up to four times a day, so. We want our, we want Urbana to win. We want them to be in the big screen, so vote for Urbana, please.
Yes.
You can vote every day too, until it closes.
Yes. Yeah, definitely, the choir has worked very hard on this. I was in choir for two years, and it's a very welcoming community, and I think honestly, they're like my support system. They're the people who I go to when I really need it. So all of these people really, really deserve this, and I've worked so hard for this.
Thank you. You guys do such a great job. And forgive me if I, if I haven't noticed it, but it'd be great if this were shouted out on, on our social media outlets so that we can share this report, not just in this forum, but, you know, on, on our Twitter feeds and. Oh, great. We have three administrative reports tonight. First up is redistricting consultant introduction and possible proposal.
Okay, so we've been talking about bringing forward redistricting consultants, and tonight, they are in the Zoom. I think John is getting, okay, there we go. So there's Robert. They are representing RSP Associates, a consulting firm that has worked with many Illinois school districts as well as really big districts across the country. So I am going to let them share and introduce themselves, share their work, and talk about what they would be able to provide the board and our community through the redistricting process. So, Robert.
Good evening. First, let me do a test. Are you able to hear the audio?
Yes.
Yep, you're good, you're coming through.
All right, outstanding. Hey, I, I would like to take a moment really to, to thank the comments in the public forum, and for you, the Board of Education, to allow this venue to hear some of these comments. I know the things that we're talking about tonight, and if this proposal moves forward, these aren't going to be easy conversations for, for anyone. And I think we must keep in mind the end in sight, which is what's going to be best for kids. And depending on which lens that comes from, you may think whatever the decision is, in some case, no decision, that may seem like a good decision, or it may seem like a bad decision. So communication is the key to all this. I wanted to start that out because that's critical in this process. So let me tell you a little bit about RSP. This is my first time to, to talk to you all remotely in a Zoom venue. As the superintendent indicated, we are a firm that exclusively works with school districts all through the Midwest. And typically, when we get involved, it's usually where there's some complex situations that we need data to help resolve how may this look. And a little bit about our team. So I started the company twenty years ago. I'm a planner by trade and training. I've done military planning, city county planning, school district planning, obviously, with, with RSP. I have all these different accreditations. Really, all that is to showcase is with me, learning is a continued adventure. Everyone on my team, those that aren't listed here, which there's quite a few, have the same mindset. So we have different disciplines that are involved in the process. So myself as a planner, we have other trained planners, we have people that help create the maps and the analytics so that the story can be told. But what does this look like, whatever the situation is? That's kind of how this conversation started with the superintendent when she reached out. And then as I've listened to some of your meetings, there's some questions, what is the right decision? And so we'll talk a little bit about that later, but data is the key piece to all of this, followed very closely with how the interaction is with the community. We've listed off some of the, the projects that we've done here recently. But I also want, want to throw out accolades to our partners. We have different partners that allow us to either create maps or to do different things in a public facilitation setting to make it successful, and to hear voices, and maybe voices that we don't hear enough of in the process. And when I say heard voices, sometimes it's, it's people that maybe want to say something that's in support of what the option is, and sometimes it's against it. And so we, we want to be able to hear those voices. The services that RSP provides are quite a few. The core things that you've asked for is an enrollment analysis, a boundary analysis, and then how does this lead into some of these other things, like how's it going to be facilitated? How does this fit into the line there of a facility master plan? How does this fit into your capacity of buildings? So we know you have some of this stuff identified that would be integrated into our process of what the results may look like. And I want to be clear that if we're asked, we can give some guidance on things specific to, let's say, a grade configuration. And what we would provide back is what we've seen in other districts, how that's related to maybe implementing it, making those changes, how the students benefit it. But most assuredly, what we do know is what you do integrate into whatever the final product is, it has to be something that the community buys into. And it may not be everyone, but they have to buy into it, because this is, as you heard from some of the comments, this is a decision for all of the community, not this is a decision for all of the community, not just the administrators, the board, the staff, or the current students in the buildings, there's going to be students not there that are gonna be impacted by this. So, I always like to start out with what we know, and I probably know more tonight just listening to, um, really the, the high schoolers talk about what's happening in the schools, that's pretty incredible, um, to see all of those elements, and um, start to think about, it's, it's about the kids. So, there's different things that we've ultimately heard and discussed with administration about challenges at the elementary level. Most of this is with utilization, the same thing at the middle school. Um, all the things that play into that, that might be, um, how wide the hallways are, discipline issues, all of these different things, those are part of how the solution may look and creates the storyline. But ultimately, bringing RSP into the picture, we're trying to look at how some of this data may impact what that decision is for what the attendance zones look like, and the number of kids that are in these buildings. Um, how does this work day to day with the use of each of these facilities? And data is our driving factor. I also wanted to, to bring to your attention that we're very much used to working in university towns, I've just listed three. Um, top one is I'm a KU grad, so I love that I was able to go back to Lawrence, and most recently, we took them through a facility master plan, wasn't well liked. Um, we ended up having to close two buildings. What I do know is in the spring of this last year, after these decisions were made, when they were able to make an announcement of what they could do, something they had not been able to do for a long time with increasing certified and classified staff, the morale at that school district is quite a bit different, but it took some very hard conversations. Um, I also listed off Iowa State, Oklahoma University, so we're, we're used to what it's like in a university town, it's different. Um, there's different things happening when we start to look at enrollments, um, with the influence of the university, um, in the particular regional area. I've mentioned a little bit about some of the services, so, the three things that really kinda were picked up that, um, we're hoping that if, if you move forward with this, well, not hoping, we know we'll be able to assist you with. So, enrollment, what's gonna happen in the future? How are we seeing things change with live birth data, demographics, maybe some infill developments? Um, how does immigration play into this? There's lots of things that are changing, that are different than what it was five years ago, ten years ago, and so, we're trying to, to figure out what, what might that be in your community. Once we have that metric in place, we can start the conversation of whatever's established, um, by the board and administration that we look at, we can start getting into what I call the what ifs, or the supposals of, hey, we're gonna do this grade configuration, we're gonna make this building a K eight building, a K five building, a sixth grade center, whatever that is, we can start looking at what those metrics are and measuring it in a way that fits within what those guiding principles and boundary criteria are, which leads to that bottom box of facilitation process. And so, I'll talk about that when we get to that page, but again, it's, it takes all of us moving in a direction. It's gonna be uncomfortable, uh, my team's used to that, I know you as a board, you're used to that as well, cause there's hard conversations, probably every meeting, with something that you would like to do to better the students, but for different reasons, you can't make all of that magic happen because there's a lot more complexities to it. So, the step one, I've, I've mentioned about, um, the enrollment, the demographics, development, I'm just talking in a hundred thousand foot view. Um, ultimately, on that bottom point capacity of schools, that's gonna be the driver of any of the solutions. Do we have the right space for those programs and for students to be in there? And if not, how, how do we remedy that? How do we make that situation better for the students and for the staff? Just a, a revisit of, here's all of this data. Um, this isn't just magically saying something's gonna grow or something's gonna decrease, it is a statistical forecast model, where many of the variables that you see listed off to the right side are integrated in down to each of these areas that I call planning area. So, what's happening in a single family development, what's happening in an apartment complex? Is it increasing, is it decreasing? We're seeing more kindergarteners, will that continue? Um, all of these different data sets, whether it's census data, the student data, city data sets, county data sets, all of that helps us better understand what's in the ground, what could be in the ground, and how does that impact our market share of students that we potentially could have, um, over the next five years. Just to give you a visual, um, this is, um, a map that illustrates some of those planning areas, and the green areas represents, um, what a planning area is, and this is Rockford Public Schools. Um, we're showing the number of, or when units were built, that's the dots. And that was important to being able to understand, um, how we have a subdivision lifecycle, we have more kids here, fewer kids. It means, means a lot more when you see it, um, with your data. Ultimately, as an example, um, trying to showcase, um, here's the number of students, and whether it's a reside, so we know where students reside and how that correlates with the attendance boundaries, and then how many are actually attending, so we have a lot of, uh, intra-district, so movement between buildings. Won't have this case with your, um, middle school and high school, but just again, showing this example with Rockford Public Schools, if we were to look at this with elementary buildings, there's movement of kids that are naturally happening for, for varying reasons. Uh, but we wanna track that, because if we have a boundary change, um, let's say with your dual language, that's gonna have an impact in some areas where there's more kids. Um, we're currently working with Palantin on their bond plan of how can we, how can we best create neighborhood schools for students that, um, are in their dual language program? And how do we create a boundary that will make sense for neighborhoods? And not that we just picked and choose different areas to, to get the right mix of kids. Um, so it's quite a balancing act, and you'll see when I talk about some of the elements, um, here a little bit later, how that comes into fruition. Um, we'll look at things with development as it's broken down, in your case it'll be by elementary buildings, cause that makes the most sense, since that's the pieces of the pie, um, where we have, uh, the mixture of, of kids, since there's more facilities there. But that's important to understand that if we have infill developments or new developments, are we factoring that potential in what we see for, um, students in those particular attendance areas that may be redrawn? So, here's the process, um, example that we gave, and, and we will zoom stuff out of the way so I can read some of this. Um, key things are off on the left-hand side, but I wanna talk a little bit about these colors. Um, I think this is important, something that I hope your community sees, um, moving forward, if, if, if you choose RSP to do this, there's many colors because we know it's not just RSP that's gonna get this to the finish line. This takes everybody in your community, and we know it first starts with the board, um, where we're saying in December, um, this is where we establish those guiding principles and boundary criteria. And this may be where we set a framework up where there's multiple options that we're looking at, maybe some of those that we heard this evening and what's been talked about in previous meetings. So, setting that sandbox, what are those bumpers, what's the framework that we have to work within? Um, presenting that enrollment analysis, also what happened in December, and yellow represents, um, us, the consultants, the pink is, uh, administration, your staff, blue is the Board of Education, and then green is this boundary admin meeting team. So, one of the things that, that we subscribe to is, you can't just throw options out to anybody, general public, even with my family, there were things that you talk about that you need to, to vet and think deeply about what are the implications to. So, this boundary admin meeting team would be to like work through things that might get into some of the implications of, hey, if we have a sixth grade center, if we have a K eight building, what are some of the trade-offs that we may have to consider as we look at whatever the board sets as the, the guiding principles and boundary criteria? We'll work through that with two meetings with administrative team. And then we come out to, really, I'd say the bread and butter, the most important piece, getting the public involvement. And we have different ways by which that would occur, um, some of it would be in-person meetings. Some of this would be, um, videotaping, kind of an antiquated term, but like, recording the, the meeting, so it can be posted out on, let's say, your YouTube channel or out on your website. But then we have some other tools that we use, um, for surveys for those people that can't be there, but a way in which we can get good information back, and so that's one of our business partners, Metro Quest. And the way we do surveys there is quite a bit different than a survey monkey or a thought exchange. Um, it's really trying to get what these trade-offs are, so that we have some good information. Now, I don't like this, or I do like this, but information of why you would support something. When we come out of those public input meetings, um, that's where we would try to, uh, examine what those ideas are. Can it fit better into what the board provided as that framework? Um, we'll have those conversations, can we make those changes? And then ultimately, in that boundary admin meeting three, there would be a recommendation that would come to you as a board, um, in March of next year, so March of two thousand twenty-four. So, again, this, this is, this is the process, many colors, um, it's been very successful, um, particularly when we added this different survey, um, that's probably my one thank you to COVID. It allowed us to kinda look at some things a little bit differently and how we try to engage, um, the community. I've kinda mentioned each of these as far as who's responsible, but I wanted a takeaway for people later to come back and say, hey, here's, here's what all those colors meant, and that way you don't have to listen to me. Um, the next piece, um, where I was talking about boundary criteria or guiding principles, this is just kind of an example of what we've seen in some of the, the districts of like what this potentially might impact. So, this sets that framework, that sandbox, and this changes a little bit, um, with some of these items, other items are added, some are eliminated. This would be the point where, hey, if we're just saying that Wiley's going to be a sixth grade center, that's all we're gonna look at. If we're gonna look at something that's different, we're gonna put that there's gonna be some other, um, ways in which we try to examine what this might be. Um, again, we wanna make sure that we're working towards something that's gonna fit things. Um, I can't remember if I put this in this presentation, but this ACE concept, does it fit your academics? Does it fit your culture? Does it fit into your economic plan? So, ACE. If it doesn't fit one of those, um, it's probably not gonna be a good plan, and so is it worth, um, exploring? Maybe, maybe not. We then have boundary criteria, and so I've listed these off alphabetically. This'll be more before the board meeting, you'll get what I call a flipped classroom, where we'll give you some of these examples for you to, to weigh out, um, and, um, be, be prepared for when you come to that, um, first board meeting to provide guidance, whether it's prioritization, or just generally, here's some primary criteria, here's some secondary. Um, that's what, um, happened in, uh, St. Charles, um, we have primary and secondary considerations. I think that's gonna work for them, doesn't always work for every district, sometimes it needs to be prioritized. Um, but again, these will mean much more, um, when we talk about that in perspective to your district. This is really a way for us to benchmark any of the options that we have with some, some of the data sets. The facilitation, um, really, I just wanna talk about, some of the stuff is in person, some of it's virtual. Um, we try to flex with things, um, but I really want to hone in on that it starts with the board, it ends with the board, but we're listening to the community as we move through the process. And I go back to what I started out with, depending on your lens of whatever we're talking about, there's gonna be some things you like, some things you don't like. But ultimately, we have to keep in mind what's in the best interest of the students. I gave an example here of how we move through some of the process. Um, and this was, I believe, what we use, it might have been Lawrence, Kansas, actually, but regardless of who it was with, the adaptation of how things move through. And I think this is important, where I want everyone to walk away with, when, when you choose RSP to do this, you're gonna see how, as the data meets or doesn't meet what the guiding principles or the boundary criteria are, things start to adapt and change to create what ultimately is a plan that's initially brought out as a draft to the public, but ultimately, as it's refined, to a recommendation that comes back to you as a board. We almost always learn something in those public inputs that have significant implications to what the plan may look like. The perfect plan is generated by going through this process, not exclusively from one particular entity. So, I gave kind of an example, this is, uh, with Indian Prairie two oh four. Um, two years ago, we took them through a very contentious, um, boundary change, um, where we had differences of north and south enrollment and demographics, and, of course, a lot of culture of which high school that you would ultimately want to be in. Here, I'm showing you what, um, was happening at the elementary level, um, this fed into the entire system. Um, and then ultimately, um, some of the tools that we've used in the outflow, um, would be like an address locator, so the boundary change has gone into place. Now, the realtors, the parents, um, the registrars, they wanna know where do you go to school? Um, we have tools that, um, provide that follow-up. But again, visually, where, what, where are all these changes happening? Um, the superintendent indicated, hey, go ahead and put, um, the breakdown of the costs for what, um, RSP would be providing, so you can see each of, um, these four elements, um, that, um, we've included in this proposal. So, the enrollment analysis, that court data, to be able to know what's happening in any of these small planning areas. The boundary analysis is to do all the what ifs. The facilitation is a combination of those committee meetings, the board meetings, public inputs, and of course, the line item for the survey that happens when we do those public inputs gives you, um, that total of forty-nine-five. And then I'm not gonna read off these bullet points, I wanna give the opportunity for the board or, um, for Dr. Ivory Tatum to, to make any additional comments. Um, really, we're here to help you all through a challenge of what will this look like? And, um, some of the, the reasons of, of why you've gotten here, they're important, definitely in the storyline. But, we're not here to judge, um, how we've gotten here, we're here to try to assist you guys to move to the next step, which is, how do we help better the enrollment and capacity issues at the elementary and middle school level? So, I'll send this back to you all for questions, if, if I can answer them tonight, I will. If not, I'll, um, respond to, to, um, the superintendent with an appropriate answer.
Uh, board members, any questions? Uh, go ahead, Sherry.
Um, I was wondering what the challenges are for districts with high mobility rates like we have.
And the, the challenge is, like, when we look at some of what I would call the intra-district, or let's say it's just movement out, they're, they're just out of the district, it's, it's trying to determine what is that in-out migration and what impact that has in different areas. Um, is it more of your single-family development, is it the multifamily developments? But, it's really trying to get a handle of that, and that's why, um, a good portion of the analysis that we are looking at is, what, what are those elements, and can we contain them statistically to accurately say, here's where that enrollment is tracking? The big challenge has been COVID, um, we, we've seen enrollments go down. Some are slow coming back, some are faster coming back, um, but, and then do they come back? So, what is that COVID recovery? It's different in each district. Um, that's the other thing that we'll try to isolate, that could be a challenge, um, because people are making choices and can make different choices than what they could prior to COVID.
Um, that has probably been the nature of our community all along, um, to have the high mobility. So, do you look at the, the numbers of the students where they're from that are leaving and try to determine, um, reason or to see a tendency of, of who seems to be able, who are leaving? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's a great, great, great question, and what, what I would say is, we work with administration, so the data sets we typically get, they're not gonna tell us the why, but we can work with administration on how to track down more specifically what that why may be. And so, um, I think it's in concert with administration. And so um I think it's in concert with administration and then what we know with working with other districts that have a high mobility rate.
I just tengo una pregunta. Um como puedes ver, en el nuestro distrito es multicultural y multilengua. Como van a, van a, how do you going to address the multilingual families?
Yeah, that, that's a great point. So um my Spanish is not good. I could understand some of the stuff you said.
We have a interpreter here who will translate that.
So uh in our district is very, we have a lot of familial, um multilingual families. And our family is multicultural, so we just want to know how you can address all this situation.
Yeah, so I think there's several things. One, one is with the data. Um as we look at where different groups of people live, that's gonna create some of this migration in-out type of system. So in the data, there, there are some things that we must isolate and examine. So for sure, the, the dual language, the, the multiple uh different ethnicities is, is a part of that. The second piece is, that I think is being asked, is how do we address getting feedback from some of these other groups that maybe don't come to the public inputs? And so that's something we'd work with the district. There could be interpreters at the meetings. Um sometimes when the meetings are held, has an impact on whether or not they can um be there. Um for sure, anything that we create that goes out to the public, it should be put in um as many of the languages the district has um for students. Sometimes it's challenging with maps and data, but for sure, working on that level. And um again, just trying to reach out to some of those um community members that could allow um their input to be seen in the entire process.
Thank you.
Board members and ambassador, go ahead, Robbie.
Well, I was gonna ask um about how, how long-term or how good your predictions are over time. And your slide says ninety seven percent accurate for midpoint projections. What kind of timeframe is that?
Yeah, and, and that would be um five-year time period. So unfortunately, COVID hit, and so there, there's always things where you're like, ugh, um who would have predicted a pandemic or how people would have um responded to that? Um hard to put that statistically um in the projection. So it, moving forward, um if I look before the COVID, um we were typically ninety-nine percent to a hundred percent in year one, and when we get to year five, we'd be ninety-seven to a hundred percent. Where we didn't fit within those parameters, there were some very unique things happening. Like work that we were doing up in the Bakken area of North Dakota during the, the oil boom, um very unpredictable. But the beauty of the way we look at the district, if let's say in year one, year two from now, projections are either over or under. Because of the way we look at this statistically, we would know, is it something related to infill development? Was it something related to live births and what that means for how uh the district was naturally getting students? All the variables are tied back individually to each of these planning areas. So there's a way in which um when we start to look at this, let's say two years, three years out, um we'd be able to statistically know what happens. That's a good question, though.
Also, uh, you know, this kind of came to mind as you were talking about how, you know, you look at the age of a neighborhood, you know, some neighborhoods have like kids in every house and others are mostly retired people. And is that neighborhood with the kids in every house gonna become a retired person neighborhood ten years later? Uh so you're talking about underfilling some areas to plan for growth. And so that's uh where this came to mind. So I mean, would you expect uh people that use your services to, that need to redistrict again fifteen years later? Or what kind of longevity would you predict?
Man, that's, that's a great question. And so a lot of that ties back to things that are happening in your community. Let, let's say you have like, we, we got a district that we're working with, they're, we're Panasonic's building a battery plant. And we're gonna have like three thousand employees. Okay, was that known ten years ago? Well, absolutely not, right? So there's some things that why, when we finish our analysis, we give you some takeaways of here's what we're indicating may happen with development, or here's what we're indicating may happen with um out-of-district enrollment or migration. So that way, you can see how things may map out, and if things start going a different direction, you then have time by which you can maybe make some different changes. That said, our goal is that the boundaries can last as long as feasibly possible within the given constraints that would be, I would say, typical or normal for what we potentially see over this time periods. But again, we try to do our best. Sometimes there's just things that you can't control for, and, and the pandemic was one. Um oil booms are another, natural disasters. We have some communities where there's floods, or there's derishes that come in and just wreak all sorts of havoc.
Serious questions. So um one other kind of difficulty maybe with redistricting our district is that um, you know, one potential plan would have a single dual-language school. And uh with that, cause it's, you know, the plan as of this year is that the native English speakers in the program could really be from anywhere in the city. So you as a organization don't know where those students are gonna come from, cause they can come from anywhere. So how, how would you take that into, are you able to take that into consideration, or you just presume that it's an even split, and like one-fifth from every neighborhood is gonna be in the program, maybe? I don't know.
Hey, let, let me ask one clarifying question. So right now, there's dual language in a set at one school?
It's at two schools.
At two schools, alright. So we, we would try to look at things, where, where are those kids now coming from? And we'd have to make some different assumptions about how does that then relate when you say, hey, if I'm a uh English-speaking person and I can now come to one building, we're gonna have to make some different assumptions by what that may mean for different parts of your community. And that's kind of a little bit hard when you're, you're trying to, to grow something. And, and let me give you an example, cause we're, we're doing something that I would say is pretty similar here in, in St. Charles. And we're gonna have a, a dual-language school. It's one of the options we're looking at. And so how do we fill this with English-speaking and then those that are bilingual? Do we have one section, have two sections? No, we're gonna have two sections and two sections, okay? So that starts to set some of the parameter of what that would look like if we have a neighborhood school. But then how do we then fill that enrollments um is, if it's not a neighborhood school, it's gonna be a true magnet. Um pretty much the same things that, that I just was talking about. How, how can we best try to build that, knowing that it's gonna start small, and then when it builds it, let's say they have about a hundred eighty kids, and they wanna build it to about three sixty? Well, there's some work they're gonna have to do with how they market that program. That may be the same thing that we have here. So we'll have to work with administration on what that means. Whether it's one building, it's multiple buildings, and how we can try to create a realistic outcome of what that enrollment might look like.
So can I add to Robbie's comment? I think our, our biggest uh priority would be whatever, wherever, and we would work with you on this, Robert, but whatever elementary school we choose, our biggest issue will be making sure that that building has the capacity at that time, and then also capacity to grow. So right now, our K-five dual-language program in both buildings serves about four hundred and twenty students. Um so as Robert said, we can kind of look at where those students are coming from now, and then make sure whatever elementary school we might choose in the future would allow us um growth for not only our emerging bilingual students, but also for our uh native English speakers to be able to add to add spaces or add additional classrooms if we needed to in the future.
Another question on the complexity of this district is uh during the discussions when, in February, when Wiley was uh determined to be closed um for this year, um a lot of the concerns were about if we redistrict in a subsequent year, then students will potentially have to be moved twice uh in rapid succession. And so one of the answers those parents were given is that their kids, after they choose for this year, would potentially be grandfathered in to that school with redistricting. So if you have, say, a hundred fifty kids grandfathered in out of this size district, does that make your job that much harder, or are you, are you just that good?
I think it makes the job of administration more difficult to try to manage that, right? But no, it is a factor, like when we talk about the student options and grandfathering, um that can have an impact. Recommendations I might give in that particular line item is if capacity is a challenge, if class size is a challenge, um there might be some things that might need to be considered in what that grandfathering student option might look like um based on some of those elements. Because the last thing you wanna do is, is to lay um remedying or creating new situations that are not good for students or the staff in those buildings, whether it's one year or two years. And the whole reason you're trying to examine whatever the plan looks like is you've recognized there is some sort of problem and challenge. How do we make that better? And that's gonna be part of whatever is communicated to the public, that it, again, it's not pinging on any one student or area. It's the, the district as a whole may have to do something a little bit different. And that change, it's gonna be uncomfortable. And how long can we delay it through grandfathering and student options? Um I think has to probably have some variables set to it so that you don't create problems.
Alright, I have a, I have a question for you. Um you know, when drawing uh boundaries for elementary attendance areas, you could optimize for different sorts of metrics, right? You could try to minimize or the, the distance that, that children have to, potentially have to walk to school. You could try to even out uh socioeconomic status um between, you know, between the buildings. And you could also like try to optimize for, say, uh evenness of kindergarten readiness, right? There's, they could be completely different and conflicting metrics that, that you've been uh given uh to, to deal with. So what do you require the board, I guess, to try to figure out? Uh the relative importance of these metrics, and, and are there any other examples of metrics you've used in other districts uh that we should consider?
Yeah, excellent question. And that gets to what I've referenced as homework for the board. So when before that, that board meeting, um you'd have this flipped classroom where we would give you what those metrics might be. We'll work with administration between now and then. There, there may be some other things that are specific um to your district that might need to be considered. Um might be a policy, might be a end outcome of, of what this could mean specifically for groups of students. But for sure, you would get the information. We'd have the conversation. For instance, you may want to minimize the number of students that are impacted, but you want boundaries to last for a long time. That may not be possible. It might be we have to impact a lot of kids for that boundary to last a long time. We could do the same thing with many of the different metrics that we look at where they are fighting each other. And ultimately, the reason we have those guiding principles and why we have the boundary criteria is that helps start the conversation. It allows the public to see transparently what, what is that impact of whatever the solution or solutions that are brought to the community for them to discuss and help provide guidance on, hey, are we, have we gone the, the wrong way? Like, let's say the board, you say, we want demographics to be completely balanced within two percent of each of our elementary buildings, right? So we create probably a checkerboard type map. Well, what type of response are we gonna get? Hey, we're too far from this school, or why is it this group is moved over here? So there's kind of a balancing. And I think that, that's why I don't always hone in and say you should prioritize criteria. Maybe, and again, my reference was to St. Charles, and it was like, within the last two weeks, we worked with the board. And they had primary and secondary um criteria of the, the ten that we were looking at. So um that may be the case for you. Again, it's what's best for Urbana. Um not necessarily St. Charles or Indian Prairie or any of the other districts we work with in Illinois.
Thank you. Uh, uh board members, student ambassador, administration, any, any other questions? Alright, I really, really appreciate this, this presentation.
Can I make another comment?
Sure.
So um there is also a professional services agreement um that the board members have and was part of the packet. Um Robert already uh referenced the price point for their services, which is um he's basically walked through everything that they would do um as part of their um scope of work with Urbana. Um this is just a first read tonight. We wanted to um make sure that the agreement was uh presented at the same time as the presentation. Um we will bring this back at the October tenth meeting next week and ask the board um for a vote um on approving a contract to work with RSP and Associates. We've already budgeted um for a redistricting consultant firm, knowing uh this was a priority for the year. We've also budgeted, um Katie has a line item for redistricting as well as strategic planning uh for the year. So we've already budgeted fifty thousand dollars for both. Um there might be some additional uh expenses, there will be, um for travel. Those are not invo- uh included, and so we would work those out with RSP um for the times that they come in person, uh for some of the uh public uh engagement processes. So first of all, I think first step was just kind of getting them here so they could talk about what they can do with us. Um and how they can engage our community. But then the next step is uh approving this agreement. Um my hope is that once they get started, kind of thinking about the timeline, is that um as Robert and his team come back to the district in December, in January, um early second semester, then we hopefully, uh with some of the information that they gather, can start uh looking at some low-level strategic planning, public engage engagements a- as well. So we can kind of do some side-by-side work um in, in the spring and second semester. But this is kind of the first step to really help inform our strategic planning process. So I know it feels rushed because we've been talking about it a lot the last couple of meetings. Um but as you can see, starting in December, we still won't have um probably uh everything that we need in terms of a boundary pl- plan until March or April. So um it is a time uh consuming process and um something that we really need to get moving so we can start making some really big decisions. So the agreement will be on the agenda for approval for next, next week's meeting. So if there are questions between now and then that I can answer or send to Robert and his team, either about the agreement or what he's presented tonight, then just let me know.
Alright, thanks again, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too.
Uh our second administrative report tonight is a UHS college and career update. Um Dr. Norton.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I'm gonna share some statistics and information about executive internship, um dual-credit opportunities and the education pathways program. While John's pulling that up, I do wanna thank a couple individuals that have helped provide the statistics for the information for this presentation. And that's Amanda Rosser at the high school. She's the CTE department chair. Um also the executive internship coordinator. And then Nick Elder, the director for um education for employment from Parkland, also provided some trend data, and Brittany Ward, school counselor. And then a lot of the work that you'll hear that has occurred the past couple years with um education pathways is work that Mrs. Uscolli has done the past couple years. And so um just wanted to point that out as well before we get started. So, first with executive internships. We have 16 students participating. So, this is a class at the high school. And then we also have students have opportunities to be placed in areas of interest. So, we have seven in Health Science, four in Work and Family Studies, three in Science, Tech, Engineering, and Math, and two in Marketing and Management. Students are working with UIUC on practicing resume review interviewing skills. And placements are just starting to begin. And we have some students placed at Christie at the Fields, City of Urbana IT Department, and the Recreation Club. The Early College and Career Academy at Parkland. So, we've seen a lot of growth there that we're really excited about. And I'll show in just a moment on the chart. But previously, we have five or 10 students per year. And this year, we have 20 students that are participating. Another lovely thing about this is our students, compared to many districts, do not pay for this. We provide that. And we've worked with Ms. Roland, and it's also increased this amount because we have, you know, really four times the number of students that are taking these dual-credit opportunities. So, what dual-credit means is they get credit at Parkland and also at the high school as well. So, we have students that, six students that are participating in the Certified Nurse Assistant Pathways, six in Criminal Justice, three in EMS, Emergency Medical Services, two in Precision Agriculture, one in Education Pathway, one in Industrial Technology, and two in Computer Programming. We still want those numbers to grow, but we're really pleased with the jump that we've made this year. Additional dual-credit courses at Parkland, and you'll see several there. And so, this isn't a particular pathway, but students do earn dual-credit. Art History II, Metalwork and Jewelry, the Solar System, Public Speaking, World Geography, Intro to Non-Western Literature, Intro to Philosophy, and Diversity in Society. And then this chart just represents what I mentioned earlier, the growth that you've seen, that you'll see this year. And again, we just want to continue that upward trend. But you'll see even pre-pandemic, our numbers were, and even before that, usually hovered around five or six. And now, we made quite an increase. There's also opportunities for certification. So, students that complete the CNA program, or EMS, or Precision Agriculture, when they complete that, they also can have opportunities for being certified in those areas. Additional opportunities for certification at UHS are with the Childcare Resources, Advanced Childcare and Development, and then also the Safe Food Handler Certification through Culinary Arts. And then at UHS, there's also 90 students that are enrolled in a dual-credit Advanced Composition course. Looking at this chart, you'll see in English 101 to English 102, we've seen an increase. So, from 2018 to 2023, numbers went from 50 to 82. And in English 102, 45 to 63. And that chart represents those statistics. This is a recommended pathway. So, now I'm shifting to the Education Pathways, the work that's been done the past couple of years. So, this is a recommended guideline from the state of how that should look from one year to the next, the courses that students would take to earn a college and career pathway endorsement on their diploma. And so, we start, you'll see at the very bottom, I know it's really small, but it's participating in AP or dual-credit courses. Also, having those credentials that I discussed, continuing that path post-secondary after high school. And this is a guide. And in the next slides, you'll see what we're actually doing, starting at the middle school, actually. So, at UMS, there's a Career Connections class. And with our partnership with EFE at Parkland, there's typically an eighth-grade career conference each year. It's shifted from either in-person to virtual. We'll see if we're in-person this year. And then we also have avid electives in grade six, seventh, and eighth this year. And so, that's an elective course. Cindy Adamac, that was here earlier, she's the coordinator at UMS. And then the plan is to continue that at the high school. And then at UHS for freshmen, again, this is that pathway. We have child development, or parenting, or human development, and also intro to careers or intro to teaching. And then sophomores have one semester of psychology. Freshmen that take one of the following three courses, whether it's human development and family wellness, parenting, or child development. If they take any of those courses and complete that, then they also can participate in the year class that runs the Tiny Tigers. And then juniors, the next pathway is taking AP Psych for two semesters and Advanced Child Development for one or two semesters. And then we have a partnership that we're working through with Parkland. And that's the Intro to Education course that I mentioned earlier, Intro to Special Education, Psychology, and Introductions to Educational Technology. And then also, we have sent students the past few years for a three-week opportunity at Eastern where they take a whole child course in the summer. Other requirements that we want to continue because this work is not done. We want to strengthen this work and make sure we roll it out so students can earn that certification, that seal on their diplomas. And that's working with ISBE, continuing to connect with Parkland and Eastern, having competition and club opportunities. There was some research done last year that we have not completed. We've also had some individuals that have attended Educator Rising Conference, and that's a club, a competitive club organization. And then also increasing work-based learning opportunities. Any questions? That concludes the presentation. So, again, just an overview. We could drill down even further, but I just wanted to share some statistics tonight so you could see our offerings and the areas that that enrollment has increased.
Board members, any comments, questions?
Do we pay for the certification for the students if they're interested for CNA and EMT?
That's a really good question. I will have to check on that.
Okay. I'm excited to see the expansion of the classes. That's really exciting.
Yeah, I haven't handled that directly, but I will, I can check on that for you.
Our students really have a great opportunity to cut their college costs by taking these classes. I hope that parents listening will really think about taking advantage of that opportunity. It really makes a huge difference for kids who are college-bound and even those who are entering the workforce to gain some of the skills there that are offered. So, really excited to see more classes offered. And I recognize several of them as being gen ads. So, that definitely helps regardless of what field of study you're going into.
You're right. They get it out of the way now and they save a lot of money since we incur those costs.
Between AP credit and dual-credit classes, I think both my boys shaved a semester off of their college. So, thank you, UHS. And I'm really, really happy to see the numbers grow. Any other comments or questions?
With AP classes, they told us that we had to like pay a hundred-some or more than that, like money to be able to even get a chance on passing. And I know a lot of people who haven't passed and just use like all that money and then weren't able to get a college credit. Are there ways that the school can help provide students that don't have enough money to like be able to pay for those AP credits?
So, some things that we can do is working with principal scholars and preparing our students for that. There's some things that we could do to provide more support on campus for preparation. And then, again, we can investigate the cost. We don't ever want someone not taking it. So, there are some things we can do if students aren't able to afford the cost of that assessment because, again, we want to make sure. So, that shouldn't be ever a case at all that students don't take it because of costs.
Okay.
Yes, and I think our free and reduced lunch students get the waiver, just, you know, like they don't have to pay to take the SAT either. So, as Dr. Norton said, yeah, we would work with any family.
Good question.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. When Ben brought this up, I thought his question had to do with also trades and other people in the community have asked about, do we have opportunity for our students to go to Parkland to get some of the experiences and the background in the trades that they could go into at Parkland?
We do. They have offerings there as well. And then also, you know, even for executive internship, there's some things that we could examine there. I mean, it's all based on student interest. So, I know that, you know, Ms. Rosser is willing to, you know, place students based on what they're interested in, too. So, that's always, it doesn't look the same from year to year. That's why they're placing students right now. It's not a quick placement. It takes time.
We do also have a partnership with the high school from the University of Illinois. And we have actually had students come work over the summer in the trades and kind of bounce them around to different trades so they could try the different ones out and figure out what they're interested in as well. So, there are some other opportunities that kind of, yeah, summer employment, and they're paid.
And we'll have some additional information to share. We have some upcoming meetings with our high school teachers who lead the industrial arts program at the high school, working with some of our community folks, trying to get a little more engagement with private industries and businesses and connect them with our high school students that are involved in a lot of these programs because we are building the workforce of the future. And we feel like Urbana businesses should be side-by-side and helping us with that. So, we have some upcoming. So, hopefully, we'll have an update to share about that soon.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Dr. Norton. Our last administrative report tonight is our food service update.
I'd like to welcome Marissa Trout, Rachel Brown, Chris Hazelton, and Phil Miratello to the floor to provide some updates on food service operations from Quest. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, well firstly, good evening. Thank you for allowing us time to be here this evening. On behalf of myself and Rachel and Chris and Phil and Quest Food Management Services, we do want to say thank you for allowing us to be your partner and really take a creative approach at your food and nutrition services. So, we know it's been a long evening for you, so we'll try to get through our slides rather quickly and want to allow you the opportunity to answer some questions as well. But what we'd like to do is just highlight what we believe are some of our high-level accomplishments in our first month here with you, talk a little bit about some metrics and numbers, what that looks like, and then talk about our vision for the next 30, 60, and 90 days as it relates to next steps for the food services operations here for Urbana. Yeah, this is something that we won't spend too much time on, but I do want to go over this really quickly. This is something that's really important to us, our mission, our vision, and our values. I know for some organizations, those are words on a paper, but I think for the team and I here, some of us have been here almost nine years and some of us still under a year. But I think we all have that consistent feeling about Quest. And I think that we believe in what we do every day, and that's why we're here. Our next slide, we've got just some high-level updates and things that we want to share with you. So, from a meal participation standpoint for August, we compared to August year-over-year prior when Arbor was here. And we are up 18% at breakfast and, or 14%, rather, and 8.5% at lunch from a meal participation standpoint. So, we're really excited about that. We're close to having final numbers for September, and I anticipate those will have trended in a favorable direction. So, that is exciting that the kids are liking the food that we are putting out, that we're seeing that in the numbers and the data supports that. We were able to host our first and our second menu feedback meetings. We also had a great first food committee meeting last week. Phil, our executive chef, Mario, Chris, and myself were in attendance there. We had a room full at the middle school. Katie was kind enough to join us there. And our goal is to collect feedback, right? The good, the bad, and anything in between. And so, a lot of what we heard was very favorable. We heard a lot of great comments related to the fresh produce and the fresh fruit, lots of great comments about that. We did hear a request for more fruit juice back on the menu at lunch. And so, Phil is engineering the menus so that we will be able to have that on the menus at lunch and, I'm sorry.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursdays, Wednesdays and Fridays, yes. And so, we want to show the students that we're getting this feedback, but what are we doing with it? I think that's the most important part. If we're hearing feedback, it's our jobs to respond to that in a way that is clear to the students. Chris is the District Marketing Manager, and he's been working on some surveys. And we were talking earlier about how we're going to roll those out into the schools. And so, we're excited to start to roll those out at the elementaries, the junior high, and the high school to continue to collect feedback. Also, we've identified some new team members and placed in roles of leadership at our schools for a better experience. Something that we're all really proud of is that we are scratch cooking on-site. And so, versus using the middle school as the central hub and distributing the food out, I would say 80% of the food that's able to be done on-site, sometimes we have equipment limitations, is being cooked on-site. And so, that's leading itself to better quality, improved temperatures. And it's really just allowing our staff on-site to be able to resolve issues quicker as well. So, operationally, right in the beginning, I think, as we're learning numbers, had a few misses, right, with some things related to running out, I believe. And so, that is something that as we're working with our leads on-site, we're able to respond quicker when those types of things arise and communicate with the leadership on-site at each of those schools. We have also transitioned to a software, it's called Titan. And this is something that is really best-in-class software that Quest has invested in for all of our NSLP accounts. Looks a little different on the front end. So, when we started, many of you may have recalled, we utilized FD Meal Planner, which was the platform for students and parents to look at their menus online or via their mobile device. Right now, the platform we're using is Link Connect. We have identified a couple areas of opportunity just related to the way those menus are printing out, right? We know parents just want a one-page menu that they can put on the refrigerator and make a decision, you know, not five or six pages. And so, we're working on redesigning that. So, that was some feedback that we heard after our initial Titan roll-up this month. Something else that's really exciting, we have relaunched the à la carte program at the junior and the high school. And so, we've been receiving a lot of great feedback about that. So, if you see the Doritos and the cereal bars and some of the zero-calorie sodas back, the students are really excited about that. We're also looking to expand the à la carte area at the high school into an NSLP coffee shop-type concept where we will have brewed coffee, iced coffee, smoothies, those types of things for students as well. Additionally, I think that will lend itself really nicely to the faculty and staff at the high school to hopefully be able to, you know, get their coffee at school if they're running late or something like that as well. Local sourcing is something that we also like to support. The picture that you're seeing there is actually Phil and myself touring the Solagradia Farm here in Urbana. So, we've worked with Tracy and her team. We actually just talked with her at the District Wellness Committee tonight. But we're working towards creatively trying to source from local farmers and growers. That's something that's really important to us. The challenge is certainly the volumes, right? We're feeding thousands of students, a couple of meals a day plus snacks. So, how do we make that work? Do we look at that from supplementing from our broadline and those types of things? And so, there's a lot going on behind the scenes from that. So, I'm really excited about what's going to come from a local produce standpoint. These were just numbers, again, year-over-year comparisons from prior August. Something else we also wanted to speak to were kind of our vegetarian and vegan options. And so, effective July 1, a new law was signed into effect that required food service management companies to offer vegan meals when formally requested from parents. Internally, our team has done a great deal of work and are really proud of the behind-the-scenes work that's been done. We've created a formal request for the plant-based meal and process and what that looks like. What we've listed on the slide, there are just some of the sample vegan, and that would be entirely plant-based meal options that we would be able to provide to students who do request that from a preference or religious or cultural standpoint. I know that some of the feedback we've been hearing over the past week through the food committees is more requests for vegetarian. And so, as we're working on menus and engineering that, that is something that we are taking a critical look at as we've had quite a few requests for that over the past as we've had, um, quite a few requests for that, um, over the past couple of weeks. The pictures that you see here are just some pictures from our food committee meeting that we did last week. The menu was chicken parmigiana, Italian vegetable pasta salad, and fresh baked cookies, and I think the fresh baked cookies were by far the winner from the student standpoint. But, um, we had, I would say, twenty-five to thirty students in attendance as well as Katie, and it was really a great time, so. And we appreciate those that helped facilitate getting the students there, so, um, the higher the denominator of students we're hearing from, right, statistically, the more relevant that feedback is for us, and so we appreciate that. And we will continue these meetings on the last Wednesday of every month to collect feedback, and we'll rotate around two different schools. And... I think that's it.
I think that was it, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, that was the last one.
So yeah, we just wanted to, um, high-level go over, um, some of the things that we've been doing, talk a little bit about next steps, and just see if there were any questions that we could answer for anyone.
Sure, uh, board members, student ambassador, and any questions for Quest?
Thank you. Um, in the cafeteria, um, normally we have to pay for like the Doritos and like the bars and stuff like that. Is that like something that's still going on or like not really, is it free?
Yeah, so with the à la carte items, students have to have funds preloaded onto their accounts. We've got some signage up in the cafeteria, there's a QR code on the signage as well, and that gives students instructions on how to do that, to purchase the à la carte items at the junior high and the high school.
I have a question. Uh, one to talk about, um, the app, the, um, app, the app on the phone that we were like guide to go the FD Meal Planner, are you guys still using that?
No, so the Link Connect app is what replaced FD Meal Planner effective October first.
This October, okay, that makes sense, I have a lot of trouble seeing what is the menu. Um, I haven't checked the other one, but in this one, it was really hard for me to navigate. My son's menu, we are vegetarians, le slash pescetarians, and I noticed that the main dish was meat, and the side dish was vegetarian, and according to my seven-years-old, the pizza was really jockey and the burger as well. And that was an often, uh, item offered for the vegetarian side. As well, the, in the app, the only indication that was the pork, but didn't have any other indication for other, like, what was vegetarian? Sometimes we see like Bosco sticks, which I didn't have no idea what was that, and, um, I was wondering, like, is that vegetarian, they're not, because there were no mark. The other thing is that breakfast, and notice in the previous, that was lot of sugar, a lot of like cakes and donuts, which my son is really happy with that, but I don't think that's healthy to start with, lot of sugar, um, and juice in that part, so I wonder if that's something that's going to change in that, to offer maybe more savory, um, breakfast for kids or other choices. Um, also, I have some, uh, comments from the, um, public that they have not vegan or gluten-free or lactose-free, um, items for special diets, kids, that which my kid is one of those, they have lactose. And, um, and I also, I haven't checked the website, an Urbana website, uh, schools, do, do you guys also post a menu in there?
On the website?
Yeah, okay.
It's linked on the website, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you go to USD116.org slash foodservices, the menus are linked from there.
Yeah, and we appreciate that feedback, I think as shared earlier, right, the requests as we've been hearing just over the last week through the food committees for the vegan and vegetarian options are, are predominantly coming in. And so as we're looking at menus, we absolutely are taking a look at that. Our team internally is also looking at the, just structure that we have for menus related to vegan requests and expanding that as well. We have a corporate team of culinarians and dietitian. Uh, we also are recruiting for registered dietitian for the district as well. Um, and right now, I think, um, we're just really excited about that position because that will give those students and parents the opportunities to, you know, call in and say, you know, hey, you know, I have a child that's lactose intolerant, what can we do and have those one-on-one individualized conversations? So we are anxiously, um, hoping to have some great applicant flow and get that position filled soon.
And I think just to, to plus one on to, um, kind of your dietary restrictions and whatnot, if you go into the Link Connect app as well, um, you can actually filter it, and it, it will have on each item, um, it'll say if there's any religious restrictions, or, um, it'll actually give you the full ingredient list as well. So most of the time, if, if you've got like spaghetti meatballs on there, you can see if it's a beef meatball or if it's a pork meatball. Um, so you can all, it's a little more extensive on there as well, hopefully that helps.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so on our plant-based request form that we've designed, we request four weeks, and that's just for procurement of the items. I do feel comfortable saying, after speaking with our vendors, that we can make that happen much, much sooner than that. Um, it's just contingent on based off of what's out of distribution in our warehouse, but I feel confident within ten to fourteen days.
Anyone else? Uh, thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for spending your evening with us.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, our study topics tonight, the first one is planning for 2024 bond issuances, uh, Ann Noble.
Okay, I'm also now going to introduce Ann Noble from Stiefel Financial Services, and she's going to lead facilitated discussion with the board regarding bond issuances for this coming, uh, spring. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you, Katie. I have, uh, paper copies of the presentation that you all have electronically, would anybody be interested in that? I know sometimes the numbers are hard to read. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, my name is Ann Noble, I'm with Stiefel, I've had the pleasure of working with the district for over twenty years, um, and helped you, uh, make some astounding improvements over that time. And I understand that there are a lot of decisions that you're working through right now. Um, the financial options that I'm going to highlight tonight, um, really apply regardless of the plan you choose. This is, this is just funding improvements to Wiley when you are ready to actually make improvements. And you are obviously still working through the actual structure of, um, district facilities and enrollment at each building and grade configuration. Um, but we're just going to talk to you about funding options and how we can do that on the dollar amounts that are available to you. So I am going to be brief on some of these slides because I know you have already been here for a very long time, and you're not done yet. Um, so these first couple of slides just summarize all of the district's outstanding bonds. It's important for you to understand, one of the most critical, um, factors here is that you have two different kinds of bonds. You have bonds that are secured by the district's property tax levy, your bond and interest levy, so it's included in your overall property tax bill. And then you have bonds that are secured by the county school facility's sales tax. So the bonds that are highlighted on the prior slide, slide four, are the sales tax-backed bonds, and then the bonds highlighted on slide five are property tax-backed bonds. I think the most important thing I want to highlight for you with regard to your outstanding bonds is we have been able to work with you through some federally available programs and through the state where you have some subsidized interest cost on a lot of your bonds, and you will see some very attractive interest rates that are in place on your outstanding bonds that have allowed you to maximize some of the projects you've done thus far. Um, I, I'm, the opposite of that is true, which is interest rates are a bit higher right now. So what that means is there are no refinancing opportunities that we'll be talking to you about tonight on your outstanding bonds. We certainly have done that for you in the past and been able to take advantage of some savings, but that's not part of tonight's conversation, okay? If we go to slide six, this just highlights, um, the district's statutory borrowing capacity. These numbers are, are the maximum that you could borrow under state statute, and you are going to have other limitations that are really going to drive sort of your, your borrowing capacity um, that are not based on the statutory limit, so I won't focus on this. Bottom line on page, um, six is just that you do have plenty of statutory borrowing capacity to talk about the options that we're talking about tonight. Um, the next couple of slides focus on the district's property tax-backed bonds. Um, the district has currently four sets of property tax-backed bonds, which you can see highlighted in the middle of the page there, two sets that you sold in 2017, and two sets that you sold in 2021. You also have what we have called rolling working cash, that you will see highlighted in the peach section there. So if you start with the bonds that are in place right now in the middle part of the page, you'll see a column labeled total DS. DS stands for debt service, that's your total bond payment, principal, and interest on the four outstanding sets of bonds. The total payment for fiscal twenty-four is just under two point eight million dollars and thirty-five cents of your property tax levy. This coming levy that you're about to set, that rate will potentially drop because we have assumed that you're going to issue what we call rolling working cash, that every three years you will sell approximately three million dollars worth of bonds that you have used historically to fund technology and other capital needs. It goes straight into your working cash fund, and you have used approximately a million a year for a very long time, as long as I've been working with you, um, to fund those needs, to basically supplement operations and keep particularly technology, um, fresh and current. But I know you aren't using it just for technology, but that has always been a, a recurring theme. So your bonds are modeled so that you could keep doing that. Every three years, you could issue the rolling working cash equal to approximately three million dollars to keep funding those programs. So we're at that stage of that time, time to do the next rolling working cash. Um, so if you go to slide, uh, nine, we can actually just skip over slide eight, again, in the interest of time. Um, you can see we've added a new bond issue in the blue shaded, uh, box, which funds actually about three and a half million dollars is what we're able to fund right now based on our estimate of current interest rates for this next rolling working cash fund bond. So that has nothing to do with Wiley, that's just the rolling, rolling working cash. Um, I will move on to sales tax-backed bonds next, but I wanted you to understand because there are two distinctly different types of bonds that we're going to be talking to you about over the next few months. This is the first one, this one's pretty simple, pretty straightforward, and just basically repeat, uh, action the board has, um, undertaken for quite some time. Are there any questions on that, why we're doing it, how it works? It's not impacting the tax rate, we're simply layering in a new bond issue as planned to keep the tax rate flat. Okay, no questions there, okay, great. The next topic is your, uh, school facility's sales tax. On page ten, I highlight for you the two sets of bonds that you have outstanding for the school facility's sales tax. As you will recall, the school facility's sales tax is, um, strictly limited to being used for facility purposes. We can't use it to buy technology, for example. That is part of why the rolling working cash has been so useful to you in the past. Um, the sales tax can only be used for long-term facility improvements, and you have been using that to renovate buildings, um, since the sales tax passed. I think in two thousand and nine, I'm doing that from memory, I think that's right. Your sales tax revenue has grown, um, the state did implement, uh, the tax on, um, online sales about two years ago. So you would have seen a very notable increase, about a third, um, more revenue has come to the district and, um, basically every district in the state who is lucky enough to have the school sales tax due to the addition of online sales. So your revenues way back when were about three million dollars a year. Now, they are four million, one forty-four, based on the most recent audit. So you can see, um, how much that has grown over time. The total bond payments for the two outstanding bonds are just a little over two million dollars. And you can see there are only, uh, four additional remaining payments after fiscal twenty-four remaining on those bonds because you have historically worked very hard at keeping, uh, your borrowing to a short term, as short term as possible. So right now, that, uh, blue shaded box on the right-hand side shows you about how much money in sales tax revenue you have left every year to use for what I would call pay-as-you-go projects. After you make your bond payment, that's how much you have left, okay? On the next slide, I show you a potential, uh, funding option for Wiley. Um, this provides you with twenty million dollars of project funds. And what this is doing is using some of that two million dollars over the next four years to pay interest on the twenty million dollars worth of bonds, and then the repayment of the principal starts after your current bonds go away. So you can see that peach shaded column has just simply under a million dollars in payments for the first four years, and then the payments ramp up after that, they step up after your old bonds go away. This results in sales tax revenue left to the district for pay-as-you-go projects, shown over on the right-hand side. So that number that used to be around two million dollars is going to be around a million dollars for three years, and then about a million four. This is a twenty million dollar project fund, and it is repaid within a thirteen-year time period. None of this is locked in stone because we don't have bonds actually sold yet, um, so we've just used an estimate of interest rates. But based on what we're seeing in the market right now, this is probably pretty realistic for funding a twenty million dollar project. The next slide does exactly the same thing, but it shows you a fifteen-year payback. And I could show you an eighteen-year payback, a twenty-year payback. There are so many ways we can slice this. But I thought at least starting with the minimum of the twenty-year project fund, and then another one that showed you just a fifteen-year payback as an example might be of use to you. So adding two more years to the payback produces about three point two million dollars additional project funds. So now the project is twenty-three point two million instead of just twenty. Obviously, you're extending your mortgage, just like a house, you'll pay more interest expense for doing that, but it is, uh, providing you with the additional project funds. Are there any questions on those examples? I obviously can work with Katie through any additional options you would want to see.
How typical is a, is a fifteen-year payment plan with, with your other customers? I mean, this isn't something we've done in the past, we've done shorter terms, so.
Right, I mean, you, you all have been very fiscally conservative in your, in your borrowing, and that has served you well. It, it means right now you have the flexibility to come back and do this next project, right? But most of your, um, peer school districts are much more commonly using up to twenty-year borrowing terms. That's a very, very typical, common, uh, borrowing model because you, you are funding long-term improvements, so, um, the asset will be in use for that period. So, um, nobody would judge you for doing that, but it, of course, is going to cost you more in interest expense. And to the extent we max you out for twenty years, it ties your hands longer, right? You could just stretch the same twenty-three million dollars out over twenty years instead of fifteen years so that you have more pay-as-you-go revenue available every year? It does, going twenty years doesn't mean you... Going 20 years doesn't mean you have to borrow more. You could just change the repayment structure. Or you could say, we need more than $23 million and we're willing to go to 20 years. You could do either. But they come at a cost, but it is super common to go as much as 20 years. Your conservative approach to keep your borrowings between that sort of 10 and 12-year mark, which is what we have done historically for you, is not typical, but certainly to be commended.
And if sometime intervening in 13 years, one would hope interest rates fall, how hard would it be to renegotiate the length of payment?
That's a great question. Bonds typically come with a certain period of sort of interest rate lock-in. It's not like your mortgage that you can just refinance anytime you want when interest rates change and you can refinance as much as you want. Bonds aren't like that. We have federal IRS restrictions we have to live by. And the lockout period does vary, but tends to be between that eight and 10-year range. And we have been able to negotiate you guys on the shorter end of that more toward the eight-year and I would expect that's where you would end up. So if we're looking at a 13-year payback, you're going to live with your payments for eight-ish years before you could shorten them up. Or take advantage of refinancing if interest rates are lower. Any other questions before I get to the steps? Just one slide to go and then I will leave you in peace. The last slide is simply just the process for the bonds. Again, we're selling two different types of bonds. I'm suggesting we do these together just for economies of scale, but you don't have to. They are completely separate from a legal standpoint. We could separate them if you desired. I would suggest the working cash fund bonds need to move on this timeframe because we need to hit the levy cycle deadline on those to keep the tax rate the same. The sales tax bonds do not have to move on this timeline. They could, you could do those anytime you want. There's no bond structuring pressure that forces you to do that at a certain time. You should do those when you're ready to have that money. Okay? So this is assuming that we do both of them at the same time because you do get some economies of scale from your expenses, particularly the legal fees, by doing them together. This has, the board approving what we call a resolution of intent at your November 14th meeting, that is simply saying that you intend to sell bonds, working cash fund bonds of approximately three and a half million and alternate revenue bonds, which are the sales tax bonds of blank, whatever dollar amount you tell me to use. The dollar amounts in that resolution will set the maximum dollar amount of bonds you can sell. So we can't come back and do more, but we can always sell less. So I would tend to come to you with a bigger number than what you think you want to do so that we have a little breathing room. Okay? If you say, I want 23.5 million, I will probably put a resolution in front of you that says 25 because I can't tell you how often somebody comes back to me and goes, "I need another $600,000." And we can't do it without starting the whole process over again. Okay? So at the resolution of intent, you're simply just starting the process and you're setting the not-to-exceed amounts. It will kick off a requirement that we publish those notices in the paper to let the community know that you're selling those bonds. And they have 30 days to sign a petition asking you not to sell those bonds if they choose to do that. And if registered voters equal to 7.5% of the district's registered voters sign a petition within 30 days asking you not to sell those bonds, then we will stop and we will regroup. Okay? That's first up, November 14th. Then we have a public hearing at your December board meeting. And then in January, the board would actually approve the sale of the bonds and you would receive money in early February. So nothing actually is done until you approve the sale of the bonds in January, but the other steps are required from a legal standpoint. So it's a three-meeting process. We start in November and you'd have money in early February. And that is all I've got. Questions?
So if we borrow $20 million on a 13-year payback to renovate the Wiley building into a sixth-grade center, then would we need to then, to be fiscally responsible, wait 13 years to borrow any additional money to then renovate the old middle school or the high school? Or would you have to wait a time beyond that? Is it 13 years? You gotta wait like another five years on top of it?
Say that very last part again.
Let's say the next $20 million project we have in store for us, do we do that 13 years from now or do we do that more like 18 years from now?
You.
If we're on a 13-year payback for the $20 million currently?
You are going to have, if you look at, yeah, let's see, which slide do you have up? Slide 11. Yes, that slide. The remaining sales tax column over there on the right-hand side will be what you will have left after we would sell this 20 million for Wiley. So if you came back and said, we have another $20 million project, we have to fit it within this revenue stream. So realistically speaking, you would not be able to do that next project until these bonds are paid off. Because right now, we're just leaving you with $1 million four of sales tax revenue, which I think is important to the district to have for pay-as-you-go projects. We could talk about it. You could fully leverage it if you wanted to, but that has not historically been the district's practice.
I have two comments on that, just to remind everybody, especially because we have new board members, that the board has typically had a commitment to using two-thirds of this funding source for bond payments and leaving one-third remaining for pay-as-you-go projects in the scenarios that Ann helped us present. I don't remember when that was. November. There was a couple of different scenarios, one of which was to go up to 80% for bond payments. So that's another option to leverage additional principal for projects is you could, instead of that two-thirds, one-third, you could go upward in 80% rather than extending outward with your timeframe. So there's just a lot of options on the table for how that gets structured depending on, and that's part of the reason we wanted to facilitate that discussion tonight, so we could get a sense for those kinds of things that the board would have interest in.
Well, I just wanted to clarify my question because I think it might have not been understood correctly. So on a 13-year payback, I make the assumption it's paid back after 13 years, right?
Which is correct, right.
Yeah. So my question is, after 13 years from now, can we then borrow again? Or do we need to refill the pot for a few more years?
Yes. No, you absolutely could borrow again.
Okay.
And these bonds in that 13-year scenario, those bonds actually align exactly with the bonds that are on your levy that you sold in 2021 for, I believe, the Early Childhood Center, if I'm remembering that correctly, that are on the same, they also pay back in the same year. So that will free up additional capacity on the levy. So you would have two different revenue sources for the next project in that year.
Yeah. And I actually had one other thing I forgot because I'm getting tired, but it's 10 minutes past my bedtime. We actually, you used our most current audit number for the current, but our new, next audit's coming to the board next week. And it was actually over 4.5 million last year. So that also adds to this remaining capacity, which, you know, gives us a bit more wiggle room as far as other project needs for pay-as-you-go or financing.
And obviously your sales tax hopefully will grow some every year. You won't see the growth we saw when the online sales kicked in, but you have consistently increased each year. So that over time does build you additional borrowing capacity that we have assumed no growth for purposes of this model.
I guess just to clarify for Robbie's sake, so if you were to look at the last line on the chart on page 11 for the levy year 2035, so basically when the bond payments for the column that says 2024 debt service, as soon as that's repaid, the following year, that entire amount goes into this remaining CSFT amount on this side. So that becomes available either for debt service or for pay-as-you-go projects. So as soon as the 13 years is paid off, you have that full $4 million available to you again.
Are there any other questions?
I wanted to thank Ann. I know it was a long night and she has to travel and drive to be here, so she's not local, so we appreciate you.
I do have my Holly Haley here with me, who's along for the ride as well.
Yes. So just the timing of the, you know, board members, we talked about this a year ago, almost, it feels like. But the reason we wanted Ann to come back tonight is this conversation is very relevant to what we're talking about and the decisions that we're making in regard to our facility planning. And the timeline is important, as you know, people notice, we have our architect Scott Walters in the audience as well, because we're really trying to keep to the timeline that we presented to the board in terms of being able to release the bonds and buy the bonds and do all the bidding and everything that we would need to do to get this project online for '25, '26. So the timeline is really important, which is why we invited Ann to be here tonight. So thank you.
Yeah. And I might just piggyback a little bit off your comment as well, just the existing Wiley building renovations are going to require bond issuing. So we don't have the money in our coffers in the sales tax funding to do the existing bond renovations to the building. I do have budgeted to do the asbestos abatement that's, you know, been started, that, you know, that we were working on the bid and all of that for. But when it comes to the design work that Scott's been doing and actually bidding out the bid package for the existing buildings renovations that we're hoping to start, you know, this early spring, winter, spring, that will require bonds. So even if we don't do the full 25 million, we're still going to need something to do that piece of the project. I just want to make that clear as well.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah. So we might wind up doing that 25, but you have three years to issue all of that. So, you know, if we did the 25, then we might only need 10 right now while we figure out other things.
Can you repeat the, after the 30-day petition period, what's the required number of, is it?
It's 7.5% on the sales tax bonds and 10% on the working cash bonds.
Okay. But the number of, is it voters that would?
Registered voters.
Registered voters. What was the percentage again?
10% on the working cash.
No, the percentage of numbers of voters though, that would require us to not sell the bonds.
It's those percentages. So of your registered voters, which I don't, we'll just make up a number, let's say you have 40,000 registered voters, which I'm sure it's more than that, but 4,000 voters would have to sign a petition telling you not to before you couldn't sell your working cash fund.
10%, gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions?
And you have obviously done that every time we've sold the working cash fund bonds. So I think the community's pretty used to that process.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Our last study topic tonight is the District Facilities Committee Recommendation.
I am going to, very quickly, John, do you have the clicker? Are you gonna? So I am not going to, I know we shared, we reshared the co-chairs' final presentation. They came in August and presented to the board, so I am not going to walk through this whole thing. I just want to highlight a few things just to get us all on the same page and to make sure we're remembering what we're voting for and why we're voting for what we're voting for tonight. So I'm waiting for John to pull up the District Facilities Co-Chair Final Presentation. You had it loaded earlier. So I know we've heard a lot of public comments regarding the charge for the committee, but if you remember, the sixth-grade center was part of that original charge. There have also been a lot of, so here's the charge. We've, you know, we read it at every single one of our meetings this summer, so we're all really well-versed. Any of the committee members that are here in the audience still, we kind of know this backwards and forwards because our co-chairs were very committed to making sure we understood what our purpose was and what the charge given from the board to us was. I also want to point out here, the facilities committee members, I know there's been a lot of comments in the public and on social media and other spaces regarding the makeup of the committee. And as you've heard, there were some people who started the process with us, who, some who were even here tonight, who started and maybe were able to attend a meeting or two and then had to withdraw from the committee for lots of different reasons, right? It was April and May and summertime and people had vacations and things that they, you know, were committed to doing. We also had people who started and who left the district. I mean, I think there are two people here who started the process with us and then resigned and went to other places. So they, of course, withdrew from the committee. This group was represented by parents. Some of the asterisks that you see are community members, parents who started the process and then withdrew. The committee also very diligently talked at the very beginning about the criteria to vote. There was a set criteria. If you didn't attend a certain number of meetings, you were not able to participate in the final vote. So some of the asterisks that you see reflected there also take into account that we had some people due to attendance who were not able to participate in the vote. So I did just want to clarify that, yes, there were teachers, there were administrators, but for lots of different reasons, the parents who were there may not, that started with us may not have ended with us, community members that started with us may not have ended with us. So I did want to commend the people who started in April and stayed all the way through August because it was a big-time commitment. So I just wanted to clarify that because I've heard that reiterated quite a bit in different public comments. So I'm not going to talk about process, procedure. We know all of that. So I did just want to skip ahead to, I think this actually came out again in the comments tonight about the sixth-grade center. So we did talk a lot about academics and academic outcomes for our students is a priority. And social-emotional learning was discussed, class sizes, equitable enrollment across the buildings, where all of these things were things that were actively discussed in all of the small groups, in the K-5 group, the 6-8 group mostly. I think the 9-12 group, their charge was a little different, but for the K-8 folks, these were things that were really high priorities. Thinking about not just the space needs, we also had a lot of conversations, especially in the middle school group, as you've heard tonight, through some of the public comments around behavior and the social-emotional needs of our students, the developmental needs of 11-year-olds versus 13-year-olds and what that means when you have 11-year-olds in spaces with older kids. So those were conversations that really, I think, were powerful and had a lot of impact in how people may have voted at the end when it came time to vote. We spent a lot of time talking about curriculum. I'm not going to go through the additional PowerPoint that we created that talked about what the needs would be for electives and, you know, what the model might look like for team teaching. I think right now, a lot of the meetings that we've had, we have been working in small groups. A lot of people at the sixth-grade level, Scott has spent a significant amount of time at UMS in the last two months, I'd say, last month and a half, meeting with every single group. He's met with the team teachers, the specialists, the office staff, the counselors, the dual-language, the multilingual, the ESL. So basically, every single group has had an opportunity to come and talk a little bit about what their vision or what their needs might be in a sixth-grade center. But one thing we haven't done is figured out every single thing. So I know the board is getting lots So I know the board is getting lots of emails and a lot of questions. But I think we worked up to as much as we could. We made some decisions, but there are a lot of things that still need to be figured out, right? Do we need to have more conversations about, you know, the impact on dual language? Yes. Do we need to have more conversations around what the schedule is going to be? And, you know, exactly what, how many classes will do this and what the specials will be in the electives? Those are all things that I think we can figure out. But most of the people involved in the planning process felt like we'd kind of reached a point where we couldn't really make any additional decisions at this point until we have more direction from the board. I think the overarching theme has been, yes, we understand the structures that limit us at UMS. I mean, we have scheduling issues, we have the bell schedule, you know. A lot of the parents on the committee asked questions like, well, why don't you just have, you know, why can't you change the schedule and the passing times and all of these things? These are things that we've talked about for many, many years, not just in twenty-twenty-three. We have played around with the bell schedule at UMS, I don't know how many different ways, and tried to do very different schedules, all that are extremely complicated. And if you think it's hard for a sixth grader, eleven-year-old to get from one place in four minutes, try to do that with sixth graders on one schedule, seventh graders on one schedule, eighth graders on a different schedule. It is really, really difficult. And I, as a, as a district and as a school, we've explored a lot of those things. But right now, I think the team has said, hey, we want to do something different. We want to do something innovative. And I'm going to say this again, and if I get emails about it, it's okay. We want to be trend-setting. We want to say that we have a lot of experienced, knowledgeable people who know what they're doing and they understand what it means to work at a middle school. And that as a group, they can build something that is really special and unique, even if it only exists in Urbana. It doesn't matter. If it is what is best for our students, then we feel like they should be given the opportunity to do that. I know there have been a lot of comments made about my, I guess, not, I, I'm not even going to call it a recommendation. I was asked by the co-chairs at the first meeting to share my opinion. I didn't, I was, I was a little leery about, I don't know if I should do that. And, but they said, no, we think all fifty of these folks who have given up their time to be here should hear from you. You're our leader, you're the superintendent. I think everybody wants to hear what you think. So I was asked to share my opinion at a very early meeting about my thoughts as a, on what, on, on a sixth grade center. And so I did that at the request of the co-chairs. My thoughts that I shared were not meant to influence anyone. It was my opinion. I gave that opinion as a former parent. Both of my boys attended UMS. And both of them had very different experiences. So I come to that not only as a staff member, but as a former parent. And so, yeah, I have my own opinions and that's what I shared with the group. And I don't remember who said it tonight, but someone said that was shared as my opinion. It wasn't shared as a recommendation of, this is how I expect everybody on the committee to vote. It was shared as superintendent, you're our leader, what do you think? And in thinking, talking about this charge, what's your opinion? And I shared my opinion. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to clear that up because I think that has been discussed quite a bit. And it was, it warranted an additional conversation about that. So I'm going to flip through and just wanted to just reshare very quickly the folks that made great public comments tonight have already talked about these numbers. So my intent was just to kind of put everybody's eyes back on this slide again around the fifty-three people who started with the committee. We already talked about there were people who left the committee. We had thirty-nine people who met their attendance criteria and were able to vote. There were six committee members who were eligible to vote, but not present. And the OMA rules were very specific around how we needed to vote and what the process for voting needed to look like. Unfortunately, you know, those six people who weren't able to be there didn't get to vote. So we only recorded thirty-three votes, which doesn't seem like a lot when you start with fifty-three and you're down to thirty-three. But that is basically where we were. So as you've seen in the past, this is basically the layout of those votes. And here is the pie chart graphic representation. And this is a public document. So you can also see here who voted, which we've also heard. You know, some of these people are teachers, some are administrators, and some are parents. And that is all I wanted to kind of reshare related to the final recommendation from the committee to convert Wiley to a sixth grade center. So I did also want to flip gears. John and I, I'm going to share something very quickly, the middle school, two middle school. And then John is going to share some information with the board around questions we've been receiving. So board members have been great about sharing public comments that they've been receiving. I know we kind of had an uptick in the, yes, thank you, John. We had an increase in public comments coming in just in the last few days via email to board members. And so a couple of the board members are really good about sharing those with me. So I can stay apprised of what some of the concerns are and what some of the questions are. So one reoccurring theme that I've seen in emails that have been shared with me in the last few days is this concept of, instead of having a sixth grade center, should we be talking about having two, two middle schools? And this board member Langendorf came and met with me because she's been getting that question from people who have been approaching her. And then we've also seen it via email, in, in several different emails. So I thought, while it wasn't something that we'd talked about before, and we really didn't talk about this as much in the committee. I mean, the committee talked a lot about K-eight, five-six, but we really didn't explore this and so that you have not really heard a lot of information about this. So after talking to board member Langendorf yesterday and reading, going back and reading some of the other emails today, I thought it might be relevant just to kind of put this out here and talk about it very quickly. So I'm going to do these super fast. I apologize to board members because I did not make these slides until about four-thirty today. So you did not have a lot of time to look at them in advance, but we will make sure they get added to the public folder as well. So there have been several comments regarding what if we created two separate middle school spaces where you've heard Ann talk tonight about our financial limitations. So we don't have twenty-five, thirty million dollars to do whatever we want. We are constrained within a certain amount of money for what we can do on the current Wiley site. So we know we can't create a building that is going to serve five or six hundred students right now. We just don't have the funding to do that. So we are kind of limited in keeping the scope of what we do around three hundred students. So there have been conversations around what if current UMS building, if we split the two schools and we had a six, seven, and eight kind of strand, one strand at you, the current Wiley school, and then we had kind of like a two-strand or like two teams at the current UMS. So that means we'd have six, seventh, and eighth graders at both schools. We know we have about a hundred and fifty dual-language students. Our current structure is about forty to fifty, forty to sixty dual-language students are spread across two teams. So if we continued that model, which we, which is what we currently do for dual language, and separated the buildings and we had two teams at the current UMS, we could do that with no issues, right? We would have enough team teachers, we'd have enough DL, multilingual teachers to make that happen. We would have enough elective folks, special services. All of the people who would need to work with those two teams currently exist at UMS. So that would not be an issue. The issue would be creating the second, the other strand that would then live at Wiley School. If we had a team of one hundred sixth graders, a hundred seventh graders, and a hundred eighth graders that we moved to Wiley, we would essentially be creating two middle schools and have a two-middle-school model. Champaign has three middle schools, but they're twice our size in terms of student and the size of their city. So there are a lot of districts that have more than one middle school, but that, that is not something that we've had the capacity for, the number of students to do that in the past. So what would the one team look like that would be at Wiley? So it would be three hundred students, approximately one hundred per team. And there are some FTE and things that we would be able to shift over. So we would have team teachers that are currently at the middle school that we could move over to Wiley and they would become team teachers at the new building, the one-team building. We have special education teachers who currently support students who spend the majority of their time in special, special education environments that we could probably move over or, or share. What we don't have and what we would need is a lot of additional elective staff and other folks in order to provide the same instructional model and the same comprehensive programming that we offer. We would have to share some elective folks, we would have to share PE teachers. We would have to talk about what happens with world language and our fax program since we would have six, seventh, and eighth graders. Some of these are things that we've talked about very early in our planning sessions with Scott. Maybe these are things that we would not offer to sixth graders, but we definitely want to make sure our seventh and eighth graders are being exposed to some of those higher-level programs before they go to the high school, which means we would then kind of be duplicating some of those higher-level electives in both buildings. Some of the FTE and staffing needs. I think when boardman, member Langendorf just kind of very bluntly, which she does, asked, okay, can we, is this even a viable option? I think my biggest concern is what we've been talking about for the last several months is staffing. Would we have enough people to be able to not just survive, right? With lots of long-term subs and day-to-day subs? But will we be able to offer a high-quality program where we would be improving outcomes for kids? So I think staffing would be one of my biggest concerns. And then, of course, financial, the financial impact of all the additional positions that we would have to hire. So if we were to have this two-school model, not only would we have to share some teachers between the two buildings, we would also have to hire some new folks. These first three bullets are positions that we already said we would have to hire, whether we have a sixth grade center or not. So if we have a sixth grade center, we still have to have two new PE teachers. We still have to have two new elective teachers. We still have to have another librarian. Some of the things that I'm going to get to in the next slide is we also have, would have to grow our special education department because you can't have a building of six, seventh, and eighth graders with three hundred staff members and not have almost a full special education team also available to support students who spend the majority of their time in a special education environment. So we would have the team that would be at the current UMS, but then we would also need to hire at least two special education teachers. But I think when Beth Ladd and I talked about this at about five o'clock today, we said that's just bare minimum. We would need probably three or four to make it happen between both buildings. We would need another dimensions teacher, which is a tier-three support, so that would be need-based. And we'd also need additional staff for all of the related services and support things. So initially, when we talked about a sixth grade center, we said we would move over a counselor and a coach and a social worker because we have multiple layers of those positions right now. But if we have a full sixth, seventh, and eighth at a separate building, we would need more than one of those folks to come over because they all work with multiple grade levels. We would need additional administrative support. If we created another middle school of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, we wouldn't be able to just have a sixth-grade administrator. We would, we would, I would ac- actually advocate for a second principal. And I know that is something we haven't talked about before. But that would be a need because seventh and eighth graders bring a lot more challenges than our sixth graders do. So just moving over one admin would just not make it a, a safe. We've heard the word "safety" tonight from staff members. But we also, we don't want it to just be minimally safe, right? We want our staff, our students, and everyone in the space to feel safe and, you know, their SEL needs being met, all of those things. So we would need to add some administrative support as well. So an assistant principal and another principal, which our elementary schools all have three hundred or more, and they have a principal and an AP. So we would advocate for that if, if we were going to a sixth, seventh, and eighth model. I know we've talked about a third SRO, but if we had seventh and eighth graders in a building, then, again, the seventh and eighth graders bring a, a whole different set of challenges that I think we would have to have a serious conversation about asking for a third SRO. So another area that I think is really something that we would have to talk about is the, the music department and the band program and the strings program and choir. I don't know how we would replicate a full music program option in two spaces without hiring another band teacher, another strings teacher, maybe another choir teacher. We might be able to share with the high school a little bit because that was kind of our plan for sixth grade center. But we'd have to talk about that. But if we want to continue to provide the high-level band and strings offerings that we currently have, I mean, we have people who live in our band because of our band and our strings and our music department. We wouldn't be able to do that in two different buildings with our current FTE allocation. So we would be adding several positions to, in order to make that happen. And just also the other enrichment activities. I mean, we would basically be creating two different middle school sports teams. We'd have two different clubs, you know, two different GSAs and student council and all the offerings that we, that happened at the two-strand building would have to happen at the one-strand building. Now, right now, we're talking about sixth graders, you know, it's a much smaller group when you're moving kids from one school to the other, who might be on cross-country or volleyball or... But if you're talking about moving sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to the other building, we just wouldn't be able to do that. So we basically would be, would be creating two different sports teams, two different clubs. And all of that comes with costs, right? Now you're paying two sets of coaches and you're adding additional stipends for people who are leading those activities related to our supplemental pay schedules. And I think right now, based on what we've talked about for sixth grade center, we feel really confident that we'd be able to put together a splash program or some kind of after-school offerings that would meet the needs of sixth graders. But if you're now talking about a splash program or an after-school program that needs to address needs for all three grade levels, that would become a lot trickier. So some key takeaways that I think also the board would need to think about, and these are things you heard from Robert Schwartz tonight. And that, that company is really high-level, they do wonderful work. So we would enlist them to help us with this if this is something the board really was interested in. But we would have to do some redrawing of our district's student attendance boundaries. Every single kid in our district for, for, always goes to the middle school. Every single kid in our district goes to the high school. If we had two separate schools, we would have to make some really hard decisions about what neighborhoods would go to the Wiley building and what neighborhoods get their district boundaries redrawn to go to UMS. We'd have to talk about elementary. We'd have to talk about elementary feeder schools. Which elementary schools feed into the Wiley Middle School building and which elementary feeder schools would feed into the other schools. So these are all really high-level and very complicated conversations. And if we think we've been hearing from the public and the community about this, when we get ready, if we entertain this and continue to go down in this path and talk about this more, it is really going to be hard for families to think about. You know, I live here, so I go to this middle school, and I live here, and so I would go to that middle school. We just don't have, our community is just not large enough for that. And our numbers, nine hundred kids is a lot. But when you start talking about now taking those nine hundred kids and splitting them at all three grade levels throughout the whole community, that is, that's going to be really hard. We would have to come up with a transfer process, we'd have to talk about middle school petitioning. And the last thing here is we would have to talk about additional funding needs, because some of, all of the work that we've done thus far with IGW has kind of been within the price point of around that two million or staying as close, two million, twenty million, staying as close to that twenty million dollars as we possibly could. However, if we start talking about having the Wiley building be a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade building, we would have to talk about things like additional space for music, additional space for things like fax, a larger office, more office spaces for more people to be working in the building, more classroom spaces for special education classes that right now we haven't really programmed into what the sixth-grade center. And we are at our twenty million, just with what we've been talking about so far in the conversation. So there is no wiggle room to add additional classes and add additional elective options. We'd be coming back to talk about how else can we find more to be able to make the building meet the needs of a strand of sixth, seventh, and eighth. So I know that was kind of not on your radar, but based on the questions that I've been receiving and just comments that we've been hearing, I thought it was just prudent for me to just put this out here and just kind of say, yes, it is something, if the board really wanted to talk about this, we could continue to talk about it. But I do think in terms of being able to staff it and pay for it, it would be a real challenge to have two separate middle schools. Any questions? Okay, so John is going to bring forward some data that has also been discussed a lot. So we've had a lot of, while he's switching, I'll kind of set the stage while he's switching PowerPoints. There've been a lot of comments and conversations about how many students are walking and who's getting on a bus and do we, do we really have, have we had six, you know, neighborhood schools? And who are the students that are riding buses and who aren't? So John is, I know Sheri has asked us for this, a couple of you have kind of said we need more information about this. So since the public has been sharing info about this, we thought we would give you some real, true-time, live data that really shows you who's walking and who's riding buses.
Yep, and so this is also kind of a follow-up of some of the transportation stuff we presented at the kind of initial presentation last year. We had some approximations based on where current students were living last year and just orthogonal distances. This year, after the kind of transportations kind of settled down at the beginning of the year, we get a report from First Student. So thank you very much for, Don, First Student, for giving us all the information that we then upload into our student information system, and we can get a lot better reports and demographic data. So this is the actual number of students who are bused and not bused for each of the schools in the district. This was a question that came up. This is for students for school year twenty-four, so the current school year. So this includes the Wiley students last year who are now at these new buildings. Comparing to the approximations of the buildings that did not have a large number of students coming from Wiley, the numbers were very, very close to the approximations for last year. So this also shows most of the schools range between forty-five, forty percent, and sixty-five percent of students who are bused to school. So this shows kind of by school with a little bit better distribution. So here you can see some of the schools are more heavily utilizing the bus services, and some of them are utilizing less bus services from the district. This is the bus usage by race for federal race that we have, now that we have them in our student information system. So here you can see the green students are the top. Those are the students who are not utilizing bus services. So about sixty percent of our African-American students are bused. About fifty percent of the white students are bused, and almost seventy-five percent of Hispanic students are bused to school every day. And that includes MTD and First Student busing. So this is the elementary school busing by race, Yankee Ridge and Thomas Paine. You can see the stark difference there of the African-American students. At Thomas Paine, the African-American students predominantly are not utilizing the bus service. And Yankee Ridge, because they received many years of the DPW overflow, many of those students are bused right now. This slide shows where some of our dual-language and ESL programs are. And here you can see, as I mentioned in that first slide, at the Lille and DPW, where our Spanish dual-language programs are, there's a large portion of Hispanic students who are bused. And then at King, where we have our Chinese ESL program, a large portion of the Asian students are bused there. This is the secondary busing, also broken out by race, since that's something people have asked for, and that's something we're really focusing on as we're doing our equity work this year. But that also shows all of those. So, well, there are a lot of neighborhood schools. For some of our students, there are also a lot of our students who are bused to school every day, and we're really happy with the services that we get from First Student and happy that we're able to provide students a safe way to get to school every day. But that was answering a lot of questions that we've gotten from people. So I think I covered most of this as I was going through the slides. But if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them about busing or our bus services.
Any questions from the board or from our ambassador?
We have a student database that keeps track of pretty much everything about every student in the district. If you were tardy three years ago, that's in there. So if we needed to look up like students who are tardy over the past three years, we could kind of do that, and then you can incorporate it with demographic information. We also have information on low-income status. We are consistently looking at students who need special language services or special education services, just to try to make sure that we balance equity across our services in the district. It's Skyward. It's all in Skyward.
My question was related to the concept of neighborhood schools. And in our entire district, how many elementary students or what percentage of elementary students in our district live more than one and a half miles from any school, not a particular school, but any school?
So the total number in the district, let me see if I have that pivot table handy right here. I don't have that handy right here. I did have it by school in that first slide, I didn't mention it. But that left column in the first slide, those are the students who are within the 1.5-mile radius. Some of the students who are walkers for that is a little bit different, because they either opt out, or especially if you look at King School, there's almost a ten percent difference, and that's because they have some IDOT hazards that makes them ineligible for busing, even though they're within that 1.5.
Just in the future, if I can get a better understanding of that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can get you an aggregate number for everybody, but that's the disaggregated number by school.
What are we basing it on when we say that we are happy about the way that First Students serve our children?
I am not a hundred percent sure about everybody being happy all the time, but I think it's been a positive relationship for the district. Katie might have a better answer.
I would just say-
Since she gets to deal with more of the bus problems than me.
We have a very longstanding cooperative relationship with First Student. We work really well together, and in my short time here, the issues that we have had have been resolved quickly and collaboratively.
And I will add, I think the problems are like very things that a lot of people hear about, problems with a small number of buses or a small number of students. And there's, I think, a lot of buses where people are very happy with their drivers.
I've lived that life, so that was my basic question, is so what we base it on, as to what we consider good. You know, I mean, I know all buses have their problems. I drove for Champaign and Urbana. So I was just wondering if, you know, I know there's always room for improvement. I'd just like to see that made.
So in a future discussion, I know one of the topics that Board Member Langendorf wanted to talk about was issues and concerns with, not just First Student, but we also with MTD. So we're going to have a future presentation specifically, I think, around discipline and some of the behavioral issues and concerns ongoing that aren't just new this year with, related to safety on our buses, so that'll be coming. Yep.
Any other questions? Please go ahead, Robbie.
This is not for John, but for the prior presentation on the sixth-grade center recommendation. I missed all that number, right? So I was just going to say, make a comment that I think this idea of a two-middle-school concept seems to have a lot of promise, in that if all the time put into it was just like three or four days, that's already a lot of good information. You know, there's, I call that brainstorming and not a comprehensive plan. You know, for example, I, you know, like the town I grew up in had three middle schools, but there was just one football team and one wrestling team, you know, so they all kind of combined up. And that's a way that, you know, if you're going to say, we have to have three coaches for each sport, or two coaches for each sport, you know, you don't necessarily have to do that unless that's an Illinois State School Association or whatever ESA requirement, I don't know, maybe it's not. But there's some other things, you know, like the contained sped program in the sixth-grade center was going to only be at the middle school. So maybe you can still do that, and those folks still go to the current campus, no?
Three hundred sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and not have a full special education team, it's just, it's just impossible.
I'm talking about the, like, the contained, where they're in that class the whole day.
Well, I wasn't specifically talking about life skills. I mean, I think we'd have to make some decisions about what would happen there, but we have others.
Like I say, I mean, it's three days of brainstorming produced here.
It was actually a day.
One day, okay. One day of brainstorming.
And thirty-two years of experience is, so, yeah, not just a day, yeah, so, thank you.
And Sheri, to answer your question while we were talking, it's forty-four point six percent of students are within the 1.5. That's not within, that's not including IDOT hazards, though. That's just straight out of the First Student data.
So you're saying that more students, more percentage of students, live outside a neighborhood school area? Okay.
Anyone else? All right, that concludes our study topics for this evening. We will now progress to our action items. We have two individual action items we're considering this evening. The first one is action to approve District Facilities Committee recommendation. So the chair would entertain some sort of a motion.
Well, I move to approve the recommendation from the Facilities Committee to open Wiley as a sixth-grade center.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Now would be the time to discuss this. Who would like to start?
I'll start. So I suppose anecdotally, to clear some things up, when I went to the Urbana schools thirty-plus years ago, there were five thousand students over sixth-grade schools. And every grade school except Wiley was essentially smaller. Wiley still needs to have some sort of expansion. So my question is, oh, also, there were also three grade levels at the middle school of about probably nine hundred students. More. I guess it would be more. So share with me, why are we having, I mean, I know why we're having problems now in the middle school, but what's the difference? If we had more students in the middle school than smaller middle school, a thousand more students across the district, can someone share with me what's going on?
So specifically, do you want to, I'm just trying to drill down for your question.
Well, just give me a general overview of what we're looking at.
Sure. So the demographic in our community from thirty years ago has significantly changed. I'm not going to try to go back and quote numbers from, you know, even in the last ten years. The racial demographic of our community has changed, the socioeconomic level of our community has changed. And the needs and challenges that our student body brings to the middle school is extremely challenging. It was challenging pre-COVID, and it has been exacerbated, I don't even know how many percent, since COVID. We have a lot of students with a lot of needs, we have a lot of families with a lot of needs. And as you can see, when we talk about our neighborhoods where we're seeing growth, we're seeing a lot of growth in our emergent bilingual population. And we're seeing housing concerns and enrollment growth in the Dr. Williams neighborhood. So while we may have a thousand less students at UMS, that doesn't mean that the needs and challenges that the students bring with them every day, the nine hundred that are there, are not as significant as they were. So just the student body is not the same. When my kids were at the middle school, it's just a very different, I think, makeup of students. And, you know, it's a societal issue right now. And I'm not going to get on my soapbox and talk about all the concerns in the Black community, but as a Black woman, there are a lot of things that are happening nationally in the Black community that are impacting, we are not adverse to the things that are happening in bigger urban cities. That is here in Champaign-Urbana, gangs, gun violence, mob action, drugs, all the things that I never thought as a parent years ago I would be talking about, happened at UMS and UHS, happened here. We're not secluded in a little bubble away from the things that are happening nationally. So those are things that ten years ago we didn't talk about, right? Thirty years ago, they were unheard of. So that's just- So that's just my answer for that. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything.
And also, I remember when we, we had actually had Brookins. Brookins was a sixth and, uh, seventh and eighth grade. And we combined over at the middle school during my school age, and that made a big difference, so.
We're moving, getting rid of the Brookins, adding it to the middle school.
Mm-hmm, getting rid of Brookins and adding them to the middle school. But we did have a middle school at that time that we didn't, you know, it wasn't added until we were in the ninth grade, so.
And what's, what's the reluctance of going to a K six grade school?
So making Wiley a K six?
No, 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 making every grade school K through six.
So we don't have the space to do that right now. We don't have, we just wouldn't have enough, we have 300 sixth graders and we don't have enough space to be able to spread all those kids.
With Wiley.
With Wiley. Well, we, we could, but it would not be meeting the needs of what we've been talking about with not having high class sizes, addressing some of the needs that the sixth graders bring that are unique to sixth grade. We had a couple elementary people that were part of the five, the six to eight group. And just having sixth graders continue additional year of that, that protected cocooned, you walk everywhere you go with one teacher, isn't really preparing them for the challenges that they're going to experience as seventh graders.
And then one final question, I guess. If we end up having a sixth grade center, I can see coming down the pike, a dual language school. And that is another huge problem. So sidebar on that, we have a very large document that Cal provided us with data that shows what issues we have with that. Not just dual language, but, but district-wide. We're failing our kids point-blank. We have a recipe to, what we paid for, to fix the dual language issue. So we do need to have a single dual language school. That's what they said we need to do. That's what our teachers want us to do. Are we going to end up in a four-grade school district? Are we going to have somebody dropping a hundred million dollars in our, in our labs to build a brand-new shiny school? My problem is that we're, we're ignoring a very expensive piece of advice and for, and going towards something else, which, you know, I think we should probably consider that. We can't do four-grade schools. That's just, that won't work.
So I, I think what we, we're not talking about having four-grade schools. We're talking about having five elementary schools and one of them would be dual language. We already, right now, with Wiley being closed this year, we are already basically, we are basically implementing a five elementary school model currently, every day, all year so far. And what our redistricting consultants would help us do is look at our boundaries, some of the data that John has shared tonight about where our emergent bilingual students live, where our current dual language families live. And we would make a determination, the board would, with the consultants around which of our current five elementary schools would be the best choice for a one-school dual language.
Essentially leaving us with four monolinguals grade schools. What would that do to class sizes?
It should be about the same.
I was going to say, it wouldn't probably be any different from what we're doing now.
At this point, there's 400 students that are involved in the dual language program. That's enough for one school. That's enough bodies that we could fill one school with them. So there would be less at the other schools.
So right now, we currently have about 500 students at Dr. Williams, 460 students at Yankee Ridge, and about 400 at Thomas Paine. So I'm, I'm not choosing a school tonight. Of course, that is a whole lot of conversation that has to happen. But we at least have three buildings right now who we could pick up the dual language program and put them at any of those three schools. And maybe Leo, only because of the current numbers. I think when Lupe was here, based on our current numbers at elementary, we would only need 18 classrooms. So that technically would also fit at Leo. So four of our current elementary buildings could be designated as a dual language school based on our current enrollment right now.
And for the class sizes, so because of the way the current dual language classes are, some of them are very disparate in class size. Some of them are very large and some of them are very small because we have kind of, the strands don't really match up in a way that meshes well. The modal class size for the dual language classes would come down. The average class size would obviously stay the same, but the modal size would probably come down.
And Joe, did Lupe, I think right now we have 21 classes, but I think maybe Lupe said if we were combined in a one-school model, we would have only needed 18. So we don't current, I didn't want to be misquoted. We don't currently have 18. We currently have 21 because we're separated into stu, into the two strands. But if we were to combine based off of our numbers, our, our fall housing numbers right now, we could do dual language for K five in a, in 18 classrooms, which we can basically do that even at King probably if we had to, but.
Ben, I want to answer another one of your questions because I've given a lot of thought about the K six schools, even if we had the capacity, whether or not that would fit our district. Because you think of all the opportunities that our sixth graders are given at the middle school and all the opportunities they are able to do to develop new areas, to develop friendships, and to go with those strengths to build their, their self-identity and also build their skills. And I don't know how we would be able to have six bands and, and six orchestras and all that stuff. We'd have to combine still, and I would see that happening better at a sixth grade center.
The, the sixth grade foreign language is also an issue. That's one of the reasons we chose this district was supportive of multiple foreign languages at the middle school. And not starting that for another year would have an impact on their ability to get to those AP classes and get college credit by the time they get to high school.
If I could be blunt again? Okay, I'd like to read something that I prepared based on the, all the emails that I received and the visits that I made over at the middle school and all the other elementary schools that I have visited within the last few months. So if you can just bear with me, I, I hope to bring out some of the things that people have asked me or brought to my attention. Even though the decision to close Wiley was made before I took the oath of office to serve on the school board, I want to acknowledge the professionalism and sacrifice that the Wiley teachers made this year to provide a quality educational experience for students in other schools in our district. I know it was not an easy task physically and emotionally. During my last two years as a teacher at Urbana Adult Education, I was required to move into four different teaching spaces with three new professional responsibilities were added to my day. So I have great empathy for you and the situation that you are in this year. I want to express that each of you are appreciated by the district, including families and other staff members. Without your loyalty to our students in our district, there would be vacancies in every elementary school with 55 unfilled positions. Because of the dire situation with teacher and other staff vacancies, it is not feasible to have six elementary schools in our district. Unfortunately, we must make some very difficult decisions about programming in the rest of the schools. For those of you who emailed your concerns about the changes that have been proposed and asked very critical conditions, questions, I am pleased that Dr. Ivory Tatum responded to many of your questions. Her answers provided many specifics about what transferring, transitioning Wiley to a sixth grade center would encompass. I also want to learn more about the need for a sixth grade center, and I visited with Mr. Cooper several times to understand what the staff's vision would be. I also met with 18 staff members at Urbana Middle School who conveyed their present concerns and questions about the middle school and their concerns if the sixth graders moved to Wiley. The most important issue that was brought up was safety. Teachers cannot teach and students cannot learn unless there is a safe and nurturing environment. To quote one teacher, "My working conditions are the students' learning conditions. There are too many bodies in the one school." Urbana Middle, Middle School has experienced overcrowding for too many years. We want our students to thrive in their environment, and having an overcrowded school is not an atmosphere where students can have the space to achieve and to obtain different experiences. When my daughter was a middle school student back in 1990s, UMS hosted weekend band competitions, sports tournaments, and other programs where students from all over central Illinois came. At that time, the physical condition of the schools was deplorable. It was an embarrassment to host other schools. Then later, the district made the necessary upgrades so the students would have a modern facility and the community would have pride in their schools. I feel by making the current proposed changes in the middle school, our community will not only have pride in the new Wiley building, but they will also have pride having an, an environment where students will be able to thrive and achieve. District 116 has systematically renovated and expanded all of the school facilities over the past 20 years, utilizing the school's facilities sales tax. We have buildings, equipment, and amenities of which we all can be proud. Now, we must focus on insurance, ensuring the teaching and learning experience matches the excellence of the physical surroundings. While it's tempting to compare schools today to those that our children attended or that we attended as a child, we cannot do that. Conditions, families, children, and needs have drastically changed in the past two decades, and we must recognize that. Many concerns have been, have been stated about the lack of data supporting the creation of the sixth grade center. I would like to see data that exists for a unique community such as ours. Within city limits, nearly two-thirds of the residents rent rather than own a home. Because of this and other factors, there is about 20% mobility each year. The city of Urbana is also a community whereby 28% of the land area is exempt from property taxes, significantly reducing the amount of, the district can collect in property taxes and have available in their education budget. A community where there are over 50 other languages spoken in the students' homes. How can the schools show improvement in reading scores when there are so many factors that influence the students' ability to learn each year? Students entering school without any English skills, students entering school for the first time, and students leaving the district without the ability to benefit from instruction because of not attending our schools consistently through the years. Without such data, we must rely on and expect our teachers and administrators to develop programs that our students need to flourish. We have done that successfully in the past. For years, the district lacked an alternative school. High school students were unfortunately sent to the Adult Education Center to provide an alternative to the high school setting. Last year, the district took steps to open Tiger Academy as the alternative school to provide, to provide a space for Freedom School, to meet and to open a new Adult Education Center in a healthier environment. Many other superintendents recognized the need for these three programs, but it was only under Dr. Ivory Tatum's initiative and direction, supported by opera funding from the city of Urbana, that these objectives were able to come to fruition. We expect Dr. Ivory Tatum to continue to make improvements in our district so that all students have the appropriate learning environment and staffing. There is much to do. Decisions must be made to support the dual language program with over 400 students and provisions must be available so each and every special education student has the resource and support that they need. We can't expect anything less. Moving forward, if any changes are to be made, they must factor in all these needs. These plans must be finalized before any student steps foot into a new program at Wiley. With the remaining five elementary schools, it is necessary to redistrict to have schools that meet the needs of students who live close to a school and for those students who live more than one and a half miles from a school building. We would probably have to double the number of elementary schools for every child who lives in the Urbana School District to have an opportunity to walk a reasonable distance to a school. So if redistricting takes place, I hope it will be achieved through careful analysis of the needs of students in all areas of the district. It was recommended in the review that to have a successful dual language program, there must be one school designated as the dual language school. This, too, should be the commitment of the board and the administration. We must support these learners and their teachers to provide an enriching environment. I'm wearing this jacket today because it's the same jacket that I wore when I took the oath of office to the board. To me, it represents the pledge that I made to help this district to move forward, pass the difficulties of the pandemic, and pass the prior expectations of what students needed 10 or even 20 years ago. We must make decisions for the students who are in attendance now and put their needs first and foremost. For anyone else, like me, who is a taxpayer, had children who attended schools in the past or never had children in the school, or are retired educators, it is commendable that you care about our community to attend board meetings, write emails, and discuss issues pertaining to the school. But your assistance is really needed inside the schools as a classroom volunteer, a tutor, or a mentor, and also as a substitute teacher. You are part of our village, and it does take a village. I support opening Wiley as a sixth grade center to alleviate the overcrowding in the middle school and to provide a better learning environment. I support redistricting to achieve more balanced and fair attendance centers. I also support following the recommendation of the review that one school be established as a dual language center. After the sixth grade center is established and more funding is available, I would support investigating adding a fifth grade as well to lessen the number of transitions for students. This would enable less overcrowding in the elementary schools as well.
Thank you, Sherry. Anybody else?
Yo, quiero agradecer primero a todas las personas que se tomaron la molestia de escribir o de tenerme en cualquier lugar donde me veían para expresarme sus, sus, para expresarme sus preocupaciones acerca del, del año dos seis.
Okay, so now, first, I want to thank all the people that is supporting me and talking with me about all my concerns and all the things about the grade, sixth grade.
He leído cada uno de los correos, tomando en cuenta desde dónde vienen ellos, desde el punto de vista de cada una de las personas.
I read all the emails that I get and I pay, and I pay attention to all the background and all the people that is writing to me.
Yo entiendo que los cambios son difíciles y a veces asustan.
I understand that all the change sometimes can worry or scare all of us.
Especialmente cuando se trata de la educación de nuestros niños.
Especially when we are talking about the education of our kids.
Y por el futuro de nuestras generaciones en Urbana.
And for the future of our generations in Urbana.
Veo entre maestros, miembros de la comunidad, y líderes sociales, los puntos de vista, algunos están a favor, algunos están en contra, pero todos están preocupados por el futuro de nuestros niños.
I find that all the people in the community, all the staff, parents, or members are worried about the wellness of our kids, our students.
También entiendo la necesidad de expresarse cada uno de ellos por sus propias seguridad como los maestros.
And I understand that it's important all the, that the students also have the support of their teachers.
But also, I understand, I understand that the teachers are looking for the safety and for the goodwill of themselves. But I feel like in this point, having a sixth grade center is not a clear answer. I really feel like we have to work out first, what is the planning? What are we going to do with the sixth grade center separating those kids to a building? I'm worried about the safety of the kids, but also I'm worried about academics and all the planning that we have to work on tonight, you say it. We have, we don't have a lot of planning. We just need to decide first to do it. And I understand that, but I feel like a lot of the hesitation, hesitation of the people is because they don't have that clear understanding that what is going to happen? If teachers need to go back and forth, if the kids need to go back and forth, are they going to have the same services that they do have in the middle school right now? So I don't understand that these, these people who took the time to send me an email and stop me in any, in anywhere where I was to talk about their concerns, I do feel dumb, I do feel them, and I want to be sure that if I decide to support this idea, we have a clear answer to them for what is next. We cannot expand the budget and then in two or three years say, okay, didn't work, we're going to go back to where we are. I feel like we are trying to move kids to improve the situation because I heard it. I see it. I have my best friend, Kit, is in there, and it was a shock for him. I have my kid who is first, right now, is in. I have my kid who is first, right now, is in second grade, and I'm scared of him going in that environment. I have my clients who just arrived to the United States, and the kid went to middle school, we not know English, we not knowing the culture, it's a clash. I understand that. But I also want to be prepared for them to not only move them out of that environment, not only provide the safety to the teachers, but also to have a plan for them. And I don't know if we have that plan.
So, thank you, Sitlali. I'm sorry. I appreciate that, and I hope I didn't lead you to believe that we haven't done a lot of planning. We've done a lot of planning in just five or six weeks. We've had two or three meetings, it feels like almost every week since school started. So we have done a lot of planning, we have talked very, you know, kind of balcony view of like what this would look like. So I guess when I said we haven't figured out every single minor detail yet, no, we haven't done that. But I think we have, and I'm just kind of looking at the group out there, I think, I feel confident that we have at least in the last six, seven weeks, developed a plan that we feel would improve outcomes for kids. There are things that we just a hundred percent still have to figure out. But tonight, my hope was that we would at least get enough support from the board where we can continue planning, we can continue working with IGW, we can continue having those, you know, we've had those higher-level conversations. Now, we need to figure out every single little, you know, small detail and what that would look like. I think we figured out the staffing a little bit, we figured out we can afford to do this, we know it is feasible. But yes, there are still more conversations to be had, but instead of us just kind of stopping it today, we need to keep the work moving, we need to keep the conversations going. So my hope is that we at least get direction from the board tonight, that yes, there's enough support for a sixth-grade center where we can continue to bring you back more details that you're kind of asking for.
My personal hope was to see the teachers of the middle school who send an email expressing their concerns about, because they are the one who's going to move, they are the one who's going to take care of the kids in another environment. My hope was that tonight, they were here physically, saying their concern, expressing their concerns. Some of them are, some of the others not, but as a staff, I wanted to see that unification, you know, or that they all want. I received an email from the principal, and I really understood her point. I'm not saying no, but I want to be clear that the other teachers who expressed their concern, they have also their voice being heard.
I feel like that's our responsibility. I mean, yeah, this is an issue that affects the teachers, but it really is our responsibility to go to the middle school and to have that conversation and to say, how are you feeling? It's not really, I mean, we shouldn't be saying to our teachers, hey, you got to show up for this board meeting, and you need to write me and tell me how you're feeling. That's, we do that. Now, I know a lot of us are busy, but that's the piece that we signed up to do, is to do our due diligence, and for us to make that outreach and not to wait for them to come to us to say, hey, what are you thinking, what do you want?
I understand that, but also, I feel like the rest of the community doesn't hear that. They just heard the negative part, they just heard the opposite part. So I receive emails where they say, yes, we want this for this, but it's different when it comes from them in public, when the rest of the public listening, that comes from the superintendent, because a lot of relegation is that it's hairy there, which I know is not. But that's why I want them to come out and either defend their place or be proactive, you know, because I'm not teaching in there. I'm not working with the kids.
Right.
They are there.
And those community members have that same open door. I mean, they have that same ability. I mean, if they don't have a vested interest or a kid in the school, and they're writing to us to give their opinion, but they haven't been in the school or had a conversation with any of the teachers, I mean, they have that invite, too. So I'm not disregarding any of those community members who don't have students there and who haven't talked to the teachers and who are waiting for them to show up to our board meeting to have a conversation. I'm not discounting their emails at all. I read them, I hear them, but we have a responsibility that's beyond just making a decision based on, you know, that one piece or not doing our due diligence of really considering the whole picture and those who are in it every single day. So we're not disregarding them, but we definitely are holding to high regards the people in the trenches that are there every day, that are screaming for help, that are saying, we got to do something different. I mean, we've got to do something, we've got to help them do something different. So I'm just being honest and real, you know, we, teachers don't have to show up to board meetings, they just, they just don't, I'm sorry. And thank you guys who did show up. And the community who did show up, we appreciate you, and we appreciate you waiting and listening and giving your opinion, but they don't have to be here. We need to be where they are. We need to be where the students are.
Another thing that was brought up in the meeting that I had with them is that the decision to go forward might come tonight, but they're not going to open up the school in September, they're going to have a year and a half or more in order to put those things into place. And it's our responsibility to make sure it's done well before it gets, the school gets open, and that's our responsibility as well.
Anybody else? All right, roll call, please.
Where do I start? Well, member Langendorf, yes. Member Baxley?
No.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Staton?
No.
Member Hasonaka?
No.
Member Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pulowski?
Yes. Motion passes four, three. Our last action item is action to approve contract for the Wiley asbestos abatement. Randy, can you provide context for us, please?
Yeah, we received the bids for asbestos removal for Wiley Elementary School. Bid opening was September twenty-ninth. We had four asbestos removal services bid bids. The lowest bidder was DEM Services out of Addison, Illinois, with a base bid of two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand. Encompasses the removal of all the asbestos from the entire building. Alternate one adds the removal of the gym floor down to the concrete pad for thirty-eight-thousand, fifty dollars. Alternate two adds for the exploration of the enclosed chases for the piping feeding the classroom sinks of two-thousand-six-hundred dollars. The piping in the chases is found to be asbestos insulated. Demo from the chase walls and removal of pipe insulation will be completed and compensated based on the unit rate provided in the contract or submittal. They estimated that to be about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. We recommend the acceptance of the base bid in both alternatives, oh, I'm sorry, alternates, alternates totaling three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars, as well as the unit pricing for work over and above the base contract. We also recommend the district maintain a ten percent construction contingency for unforeseen conditions discovered during this removal process. The work will start October eighteenth and conclude December twenty-ninth as a substantial completion date.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further comments or discussion on the contract for the Wiley asbestos abatement?
I have a comment.
Oh, please, go ahead, Katie.
I just wanted to let the board know that the budget for this project, I was budgeting for the construction and the design engineering piece that Ideal does for us, I was budgeting one-point-four-two-five million, and we just got a bid for three-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand. So that was Friday afternoon, and it made my whole weekend. And there'll still be the design engineering piece on top of that. I imagine probably all in all, this entire project of the full abatement of Wiley is going to wind up being around five-hundred-thousand dollars. So that's amazing, and I just wanted you all to know how excited I was about that, and I hope you are, too.
All right, thanks for the context. Any further comments or discussion, questions, anyone? Please, go ahead, Rafi.
I may miss this, but what is the timeframe for that actual abatement portion? Yeah, I said that it was October eighteenth to start with a substantial completion date of December twenty-ninth.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Staton?
Yes.
Member Hasonaka?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Pulowski?
Yes, there will be, but it's not yet determined. We call for several special executive meetings for the purpose of student discipline. Please, board members reply to Laura Johnson to get that scheduled. Superintendent's report.
So, very quickly, I don't need to talk about Walk and Roll to School Day because our ambassadors did a fabulous job sharing that. It is tomorrow. The mayor will be at Dr. Williams, I believe I'm going to be at King, and we have a couple other city officials that are going to be joining in a few other spaces. UHS Choir, our student ambassadors also talked to us a little bit about the opportunity to sing onstage with foreigner. So if you haven't voted, you need to vote. You can vote four times a day. We really want our UHS Choir to have that opportunity. The silent auction is also coming up. Remember, they are raising money to go to Disney World during winter break. So that will be, I think, live next week, next Thursday, so, yes. Okay, oh, yes, the Fall Concert, October twelfth at six P M. Academic Monogram is next Monday. This is an opportunity for us to really highlight all of our students and their academic achievements. So if you plan to attend, please let Lori know so we can have a reserved seat for you in the front row at the high school next Monday at seven P M. October is National Principals Month, and unfortunately, Principal Appreciation Week is during fall break, so we are going to find some other creative ways to, we tell our principals all the time how much we appreciate them, but we really like to make them feel very special during their week, so we are going to be doing that after fall break. But we did want them to know that we appreciate all of their efforts. Also, in the month of October, School Custodian Day was yesterday, World Teachers Day is October fifth, and National Coaches and Instructional Coaches Day is October sixth. So last week, Mr. Escatell, one of our fantastic band teachers at UMS, was surprised. Mr. Cooper, along with Rick Writings, he was nominated for Teacher of the Month. His students kind of knew, everyone knew, I think, except Mr. Escatell. So if you watch the video, the students kind of knew this was happening, his colleagues knew, and the administration, but he totally deserves this, and it was a great, the video that they posted of him receiving his big check, and his award plaque was just super fun. So if you want a great smile, check out that video. And last but not least, I don't know if Paul and Tori realize this, but they have been, did you guys not know this? Yay, surprise! So two of our board members have been recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards for their service as school board members. So President Pulowski and Vice President Tori Exum have been nominated, have been designated as established board leaders for their commitment to professional development and leadership activities. So one way that IASB does this is based on participation in workshops, participation in IESB events. They both typically attend the national conference, the, not national, the state conference, and take an active role in IESB activities during the state conference. So this was a surprise to us, too. They sent it to us, and you both also received, yeah, they actually sent a actual certificate. So established board leader for twenty-twenty-three, President Pulowski, and established board leader, Tori Exum. So congratulations. Yeah, a surprise. We are back together at Central Office, so we can stop calling our building Fire C O. So we've been, everybody's been calling it Fire C O for months. So we are officially back to being Central Office, so everyone is out of the Ray Street Building, the old C O building, and we are all kind of back together as one big happy family, and our old digs, we're still working out little kinks, and people are still unpacking, and we're still getting furniture and things brought back to us, but everyone is really, really excited to be back in their offices, and we had our first meeting in the conference room today, which was super exciting, so we can have visitors and guests. We have cleared all of our, the fire marshal things that we needed to do, so we're really excited to be back. Fall break, which I mentioned, is October sixteenth through the twentieth, and all USD buildings will be closed, so we'll be making sure that that is well messaged into the community. Just so board members remember, we normally would be meeting October seventeenth, but because of fall break, we are actually meeting next week. So just make sure that is still on your radar. And I think those are all the big announcements, and then you want to read the FOIA's or...
We did process several FOIA's since our last meeting. Carol Lichtensteiger, data by classroom. Tom Schroeder, any records that provide board authorization for a district employee to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the schools of Illinois Public Cooperative or intergovernmental agreements generally. Janine Asmus, identify employee name and work email address. Each and every district employee who is certified as school librarian, meaning they have the school library licensure and/or endorsement in library media, and who is currently working in that capacity in your district's library, libraries, media centers this academic school year. Vince Espy, Prairie State Wire. Number of English learner students enrolled by grade for each of the last five school years, as well as the current school year. Number of bilingual teachers employed in your school district for each of the past five school years, as well as the current school year. Number of children of migrant asylum seekers enrolled in your school district, broken down by grade level, for the current school year. Karen Garcia, Smart Procure. All current employee-staff contact information. And Sarah Jansen, for every general education classroom at every elementary school, the number of students in the class for this academic year, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Board reports, anybody have a board report this evening?
So on agenda, Lori and I have been working with IESB and Perry's office, and based on the doodle poll that every board member participated in, and your availability, and what you would like to explore, we have worked a date with him for November twenty-ninth at six P M. So that did receive at least five votes, I think, Lori. And then the Starting Right Workshop was one of the topics that people were interested in hearing more about. Had six votes, November twenty-ninth, thank you.
Any other board reports?
So, so, I just want to make sure, so is the, yes, is the board okay with us moving forward with finalizing, and we can talk more about where we would like to do it and all of that? But we just want to make sure we finalize the date with Perry.
I can make that work.
November twenty-ninth, we had six people who said that they could do that, six o'clock. Yes, yes. I haven't heard any no's, so, okay.
Yeah, if it is a no, please let Lori and Jennifer know as soon as you can because we have to book this soon. All right, any other board reports? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will see you one week from tonight. Thank you, everybody.